Welcome, everybody. Regular session, Mayor and City Council meeting, 6:00 PM, Wednesday, August 6, 2025, City Hall Complex, Council Chambers. Before I call... I want to let you know that the mayor is not here present, but he's gonna be joining us in Zoom. So I call this meeting to order. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Mr. Green, can you lead us?
My turn, well, thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which is standing, one nation with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have called to the public, item number three. Before we start, I just want to let you know that during Call to the Public, the members of the council cannot answer any questions or get involved in any discussions. And you have, when you step up to the podium, please state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes to speak. So the first is Ms. Roxana Lopez.
Good afternoon. My name is Roxana Lopez. I live at 1420 East Bristol Drive here in Nogales. I'm very glad you all are here. Very nice to see you. I am here to speak on behalf of the Library Board. I feel that there is some miscommunication being presented that is not really factual. And I work, I volunteer at the Friends of the Library. So we've been working on some small projects, but the big picture is to have us all blend, share everything together. If I can recall as a little girl, and I only got three minutes, but I read a book called Aunt Frank, Aunt Frank's Diary. I was a little girl. I couldn't travel much, but I did. And that book touched my heart. It taught me how to be kind to people and how to be kind to people around me. Being part of the movement that is DEI is not about being gay. It's about inclusion, color, race, food, dress. It's about inclusion. It's not you're gay, I'm gay, he's gay, oh, they're gay. I bet somebody in this room, I said this before, you know someone or someone that you love might be having issues with their person. And that's okay. It doesn't make them bad. It doesn't make them evil. And as far as banning books, I highly, highly just do not like it because it doesn't give the child and the freedom. And the library highlights books because some of those banned books are the truth. They are the truth, and they want to hide the truth. So let's not. Let's stand with the library. Let's stand with issues that really matter, like kindness and watching over each other. Not what are they saying behind my back? A lot of these people that are voting for these issues are past their generation, okay? And they're making decisions for the future of our children. And I don't think that's fair. I think our children deserve the best. And Nogales, I love. And I love the change it's taking, how we've all kind of are working together. But pointing fingers and saying, you did this 10 years ago, or bringing up things that don't matter anymore is not going to get us anywhere. Being together, forthright, honest. And in real truth, most of us will be gone. And not two, some of us were faster than others. But, you know, we all have nieces, nephews, you know, aunts, uncles that may be afraid to come out because they're gonna get, something's gonna happen to them. So you go along every day. But it's not, the issues with setting up somebody on the Library Board are not gay issues.
Mrs. Lopez, your three minutes are up.
Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have Edward Eduardo Delci. Please state your name and address for the record.
Edward Eduardo Delci, resident of Kino Springs and past Chairman of the Board of the Library. I learned about Mary Darling's candidacy, which I found very interesting because the Darling family has had a long history of supporting the library and, most importantly, being the catalyst for these free little libraries that the Friends of the Libraries are sponsoring now. We are a nonprofit. We work with the library, library activities, and we're working in keeping the free libraries throughout the city. I never thought we would be relocating to this part of the state, and it just coincidence happened in such a way that the library, going into the library to become a member with a library card would take me into seeking vacancies that was presented to me at the time. I didn't think that 18 years later, I would be getting this award for that type of service. This is really the type of service that the Darling family represents here in Nogales. And Mary's candidacy for one of the board positions within the library is welcome. It's welcome with the support because the idea of the free neighborhood, free library, came from Mary Darling's mother, Mary Darling Senior. And it spread to the city and the membership that we have in our Friends of the Library to continue this effort, this idea, and support and working with the library continuously. So Mary's candidacy receives the endorsement and friendship of the Friends of the Library. Thank you very much for this opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Delci.
Thank you.
Next is Brian Vandervoe.
Good afternoon. My name is Brian Vandervoe. I live at 31 Saddlehorn Road in Tubac. I'm Chairman of the Library Board. I'm limited to speak to you for only three minutes. I could speak to you for 30 minutes or more. Your community library is a very important asset of the city, but the building is 60 years old. It requires a lot of maintenance. The city manager recently authorized the repair of a broken cement sidewalk in front of the front doors. Patrons were in danger of tripping and injuring themselves. During the heavy rains that we experienced in mid-July, water flowed under the back doors of the library into the library. Old, dry rubber door seals and dry wooden window casements need to be replaced. All valued city assets need to be maintained to prevent further maintenance. In regards to the Library Board, I want to tell you that the Library Board is a nonpartisan, apolitical advisory board with no legal authority or responsibilities. We are an advisory board. We don't employ people, and we don't sign contracts. Copies of our bylaws and a list of our members has recently been provided to you. Our bylaws include an ethics statement. At no time are personal interests or opinions validated by board decisions. The positive influence the library has on the community are too numerous to mention. We have storytime for young children. We have a growing teen center for high school students. We have art programs for all ages. There is collaboration now between the Mariposa Community Health Center and young mothers and their infants. Support of homeschool students is being developed. Coordination with the Tubac Presidio State Park to celebrate the 250th anniversary of the Dianza expeditions is being explored. Community celebrations for the American Revolutionary War will be coordinated with the Arizona Secretary of State's office. Promotion of the mobile library in the city and county is strong. At the Grand Avenue Library, patrons make copies. They send faxes, and they fill out job applications. Tutors take online courses, and families enjoy the baby area and teens drum guitars. When you council members and we library volunteers refer to the library system in this county, we must begin with the words, "It's a community library." Later on in your meeting, you will have the nomination of a new Library Board member. I endorse her nomination and encourage you to vote for it. She is an individual dedicated to the Nogales community and its civics, growth, and responsibilities. In conclusion, all of city management and council members are invited and encouraged to visit our community libraries. They are valuable assets of the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Vandervoe. Next is John Nordstrom.
Hey, everybody. My name is John Nordstrom. I live at 34 UX Road. Address is Patagonia, but it's actually in Maori, if you know where that is. I live about three miles from the mine, as the crow flies, and about 1,000 feet above the mine. So I would call myself Resident Number One, Resident Zero relative to what's going on at the mine. Rather than bore you with my situation, which I call recreational whining, I'm not gonna go there. I have two degrees in geology. I've worked as a geologist. I've worked in information technology systems and finance and banking most of my working career. So I think I have some understanding of what's going on with regard to the mine and the community as a whole. To that end, I've created a website, which I want to announce here publicly tonight, that is going to be used, hopefully, by the community to gather water well data for the entire region. So we know that the cone of depression around the mine has been identified by the Forest Service to be 58 miles in diameter. So there's a lot of people potentially that are going to be impacted by the dewatering campaign that the mine is doing. And this website that I've created, which is SCCWatchdog.blog, SCCWatchdog.blog, I encourage everybody in here to go check it out and to share it with your friends. But what I'm trying to do is I want to generate sort of a grassroots effort to collect well data. And I'm actually creating transducers that I'll make available to anybody that wants them at cost. I can't give them away because I'm not rich. But I'll give them, I'll give them at cost to anybody that wants to use it. And then you can monitor your own well level and hopefully provide the information back to me. We're gonna create a database. We're gonna monitor and hold that data over time so we can see how the entire region is being impacted by the dewatering that's going on. So I would encourage everybody to go check out SCCWatchdog.blog. It's all one word, SCCWatchdog.blog. And sign up and begin monitoring your own water well level. Share that information with us, and we're gonna, we're gonna hold that information for the foreseeable future so we can use it to decide how we're gonna react to the dewatering that's taking place. All right, thanks, everybody. Appreciate your time. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mr. Delges. Push the button. Thank you. Okay, members of the public, council members. A month ago, I brought concerns to you about the Fourth of July event, and it went off very, very well. And I wanted to thank you all for your efforts and the work that you put into it. People were very pleased. I was very pleased. I hope those of you that attended enjoyed it. So I'm hoping in the future, for the next 250th year anniversary we have coming up, that I would like to be helpful. I'd like to be involved. I know there are a number of others. It's gonna be, I hope, a very big event, profitable event for the community. And then, on another note, less popular, I'm a constitutionalist at heart. For 30 years and another 10 years of federal law enforcement, I've worked down here for 18 years along the border. And I learned to love this area. I come from Hispanic family. My father's from Nicaragua. And I couldn't wait to get down here. Took 20 years, but I got here. And like I told you before, it was either Ajo or here, and I chose here. We live in Tubac. And how do I say this? Mexico, and it's real important for me because of the culture. I'm glad to be here. There's a lot of family. There's a lot of history, and that's why I'm here. But they elected a communist president. The consulate here, the Mexican consulate, represents that communist government. And I would like the community, the council members and stuff, to keep that in mind when you're making decisions. Optics are important. Our community is struggling. And maybe some of the decisions aren't in the best interest of all the community. I know we have to be fair to everyone, and I'm all for that. Just keep that in mind. We want people to come down here. We want people to live here. We want businesses to open up here. And the optics are important. But for right now, I wouldn't want to change too much. But thank you for your time. I just thought I needed to speak. Thank you. I thank you. Next is Emily Modelmog. Modelmog?
Okay. Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Emily Modelmog. I live at 4016 Psych Circle in Rio Rico. I'm a board member with Calabasas Alliance. And after reading Monday's press release about the memorandum of understanding between South 32 and our provisional community college, we have real concerns about fairness in the application process for the electrician certification program. We were told by a Santa Cruz County Provisional Community College governing director that 60 people had applied for the program, and only 16 spots were available. Moreover, 12 of those 16 spots would be for current South 32 employees. This means that 56 people who applied for the program will be left out. We believe that the community should be aware of the situation since both the Provisional Community College and South 32 have heavily advertised the program with billboards on Grand Avenue, and summer's still up. This does not only appear to be irresponsible behavior on the part of the Provisional Community College, but allowing South 32 to make all the rules is unfair to the taxpaying community whose children may have applied for the program. The $440,000 South 32 investment in this program should include courses such as Introduction to Mining in Southern Arizona, Mining Safety, and definitely another electrician's certification course. If South 32 is serious about hiring 80% of their employees from our county, then opening more courses should be their top priority. We urge the mayor and council to investigate the situation further. Please do not let those 56 young people down, who, as South 32 says, are looking for a brighter future. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Robin Lucky. That one's easy.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Robin Lucky. I live at 1377 Camino Faja in Rio Rico. I'm president of the Calabasas Alliance, and I want to address some current concerns with water quantity and quality that not only affect the citizens of Nogales, but our entire county. Tonight, you will be hearing from several citizens, some of whom have Nogales addresses and have recently received certified letters from the Australian mining company, South 32, asking to monitor their wells. You will also hear from homeowners whose wells have been monitored for several years by South 32. All these stories are very disturbing. But first, I want to talk about some of the residents in the Viary neighborhood. Many have received letters warning about high levels of lead and other contaminants in their water service lines, which may be made of lead or galvanized metal. Some residents have been asked to send in actual samples of their water to the water company for testing. This seems to be an ongoing issue in this neighborhood, and the water company is just telling them to, please purify your water. Another issue we have received calls on is about the very bad smell and mosquito problems from residents who live near the Nogales Wash. One young mother sent me actual pictures of the bites she received. She said she would not let her kids go out to play now. And no one called her back from the health department. The bad news is that this species of mosquitoes has mutated. It is from South America. It is now in Mexico. And based on the bite marks I saw in the pictures, they are now in our area. Mosquitoes carry multiple diseases like malaria, Zika, and West Nile virus. Last year, the EPA reported in USA Today that Rio Rico, Tubac, and Chuma Cockery had the highest PIFAs in Arizona, ranking number one. And in the United States, we rank number 10. PIFAs are forever chemicals that cause specific types of cancer, in particular kidney cancer and autoimmune disease. Sadly, in the neighborhood near Western Avenue, there are significant cancer and autoimmune disease clusters as documented by the U of A College of Public Health in several studies. The U of A has been concerned about public health in our area for some time. Now, the Arizona Department of Water Resources published and presented a report last year that said we have only 20 years of groundwater in Santa Cruz County left, with no development and no changes, no mine starting. I wonder if that is even true about, even true hearing about all the wells that are drying up in the Nogales area. I am certain there could be plenty of finger pointing on these issues that I have discussed. But we are facing some serious challenges with water security for what was supposed to be, for most of us, our forever home. I ask you, as elected officials and leaders, to help find solutions, and please work quickly. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Rebecca Ball.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Rebecca Ball. I live at 28 San Gabriel Drive in Nogales. My husband and I have recently received a certified letter from South 32. We were shocked to know that we were in the cone of depression and our well could be compromised. We have built a beautiful custom home on 37 acres less than a year ago, just off the Patagonia Lake Road. Our real estate agent never told us the mine and potential water problems. We now have gone to our meeting with South 32 with our two-part draft agreement, which is unacceptable and slanted. I have a Nogales address, and we are in Santa Cruz AMA. So now I want to know how you all can help. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mr. John Ball.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and City Councilpersons. My name is John Ball, 28 San Gabriel Drive, Nogales. I'm a retired mayor and city councilperson for 10 years. I'm also a battalion chief and recently retired as a fire chief. My wife and I moved here two years ago, not knowing before we purchased our property and built a new home that we were going to be affected with current mining operations. We have only lived in our home for less than a year. Recently, South 32 sent us a certified letter stating they want to install sensors on our water well due to our property being in the cone of depression. This will only affect us personally. If we want to sell our home and property, this will be a burden on us as we need to disclose this. Who in their right mind would buy a home with a water problem? Nobody. Everything South 32 wants to do is in their favor. They could care less about the citizens of Santa Cruz County except for possibly the persons that have been employed by them. Unfortunately, the Patagonia Mountains, the town of Patagonia, Rshaw Creek, Sonoyta Creek, Patagonia Lake, Rio Rico's water, and Nogales's water is possibly going to be affected, along with Highway 82. It's going to be a nightmare, especially if their ore trucks crash and create a hazardous spill for a fire due to the lithium ion batteries. This will create a disaster for emergency services, along with all the people traveling on Highway 82. There will possibly be closure on 82 anywhere from four to eight hours to put the fire out, plus 30,000 to 60,000 gallons of water to extinguish the battery packs, depending on size. Regardless of one's view on growth and sprawl, there's no justification for allowing one industrial project to undermine any community's future, especially under a legal loophole that permits extraction in the middle of a water crisis. The question isn't whether Arizona should mine copper and other minerals. It's whether we can afford to do it without rules that protect our shared resources and prioritize long-term public needs. We live in a desert. Water is life. Arizona's future depends on treating it that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ball. Next is Ms. Andone.
It's gonna take me three minutes to get up here.
No, it's gonna be three minutes when you start talking.
Good evening. My name is Andone, and I live at 409 West Plum Street in Nogales. And I'm here to support Mary Darling on the Library Board and for many reasons. I was an educator for half a century. I just retired last year because my body fell apart. And only because of that. But I know that books save lives. And I know that Mary Darling and her family has done everything to support reading and education, local authors, people that have written about this area. Dear Governor Castro, so many times would spend time when they'd have these get-togethers and book clubs and things like this. And even Mary Darling Senior helped paint the books that are in front of the public library. And so as an educator, and as a, I was born and raised in Nogales. The library was just the most important part of town, aside from the movie theater. But, and it is for so many people. Our poverty level and the number of kids in preschool and that are not in preschool depend on the library. So I'd like to celebrate Danita Lopez as the director of the library and her staff that does everything to be able to get out into the community and bring people in and get people to read. The baby adventures and then the teen centers, the children's books, the, I mean, everything that we do, we need people like Mary that know the importance of books, books in the home. Mary had one of the first free little libraries in front of her house. And I've met young people that lived on the top of Noon Street at those apartments. And they would tell me, we can go get a book, any book. And then we read it, and we can put it back, or we can share it. And so books save lives. Books help the people in our community reach outside our community. Because, again, back to our poverty level, the only way many of our children and our people can travel is through books. And so hopefully, you will consider Mary Darling and for the Library Board because we need people that care about books, about reading, and about the people in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Andone. Next is Larry Frederick. Next is Larry Frederick.
Good evening. My name's Larry Frederick. I live at 132 Camino Maricopa, Rio Rico, and I'm here to speak in favor of Mary Darling serving on the library board. Let me give you a little information about myself. I have a Bachelor of Science in Elementary Education. I have a Master of Arts in Religious Education from Southwestern Baptist Theological Seminary. I'm an ordained Southern Baptist minister, and I've been a public school elementary teacher for the last 26 years, 24 of which were right down here at Lincoln, where Ms. Montiel was my first principal. This is where I have spent most of my waking hours over the last third of my life. I was here six days a week. I know the children of this community. I know many of their, well, now many of them are adults, and I know many of their children. This is a place where even though I do not live here, my children were raised here. It's a place that is important to me. I know children. I know education. I have been teaching children to say the Pledge of Allegiance and to sing the National Anthem for 26 years, probably more than anybody else in this room, except maybe some of the teachers here who taught for a lot longer than I did. It is something that is urgently important to me. Reading is essential to everything we do as a community, and having a well-stocked, well-supplied library is absolutely necessary. Benjamin Franklin started the first public library in the United States. In 1790, he began the first public lending library. Mary Darling believes in the kind of work that the library does. She is also very little like what the two gentlemen who spoke last month were talking about. They called her a Marxist. They were talking about her wanting to indoctrinate children into LGBTQ. None of those things are true, just absolutely not. And they made it very clear that they did not know her. I've been working with Mary for years now, and I'm working with her now in Save Our Schools, Arizona, trying to put forward the need to have strong public schools in our state, in our country, and in our community, and in a, pardon me, in a county as impoverished, as much of Santa Cruz County is. The library is almost as essential as air, water, and food, and we need somebody who knows what she is doing, and that person is Mary Darling. And I'm sorry those gentlemen do not have a chance to get to know her, because they wouldn't have said any of the things that they said. They were speaking out of fear. Those were part of the culture wars, that they have no place in Santa Cruz County. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry.
Thank you. Next is Jose Malki-Igera.
So, good evening, Council members and citizens of Nogales and surrounding communities. So my name is Jose Malki-Igera, for the record, and I live on 310 Camino Caballo in Rio Rico, Arizona, and I'm happy to be here today. So today I have just a little, kinda like a present for the citizens of Nogales, the citizens of the state of Arizona. I am a fire captain and hazmat coordinator here in the city of Nogales. I actually work in the station down here. However, a couple of years ago, I started a nonprofit which went worldwide. So now my nonprofit provides medical equipment, fire equipment, police equipment to communities around the world. In doing so, we do humanitarian work. We also send training. So me, myself, I train people in Mexico and places like that. And so, in a particular case, we sent medical equipment, fire equipment, thank you to Green Valley Fire Department, Rio Rico Fire Department, Tubac Fire Department, and the other sponsors, Ramona Storga, and several other sponsors. But one in particular comes to mind who's sitting in the room today, Sandra Corrie and Adelia Chacon, and the Cultura and Artes in Nogales, I hope I didn't get that wrong. But they also sponsored and they helped move the equipment from Nogales, which is where my base is at, which is where I live, well, in Rio Rico, to Jalisco, Mexico. In the process of doing this humanitarian organi, or humanitarian mission, the community came back and they gave me a helmet, and it's an indigenous community that they're Wixarica people, okay, who do Wixol art. And so they gave us a helmet covered up in beads. You'll see it in the front. They also gave us a deer for the nonprofit organization called Public Safety Global Alliance. In that, we decided to collaborate with the Cultura and Arte in Nogales and try to get those deer out there so people can see the culture behind it, the community, and the humanitarian work behind it. And so with that, before I run out of time, because I only have three minutes, so if I missed anything, it's gonna be on that letterhead over there by the deer, okay? And my website, or our webpage is publicsafetyglobalalliance.org. But before I run out of time, we do have a special award. It comes from Public Safety Global Alliance, all the staff, all the people, the volunteers that help out to make these humanitarian missions succeed, which is a lot of people. We decided to give the Cultura and Arte a certificate of recognition. I'm gonna read it really quick. Says, "This certificate is presented to the Nogales Culture Arts Committee in recognition of your valuable contribution and support, which made possible the transportation of medical and fire equipment in support of our mission. We also extend our sincere gratitude for your collaboration in the Wixarica Sacred Deer Esperanza." We named Esperanza meaning "hope." And so we provide hope for communities that require those needs. So with that, I'd like to give this award to Esther, who is our council member and who is here present, and please distribute this with the Arte and Cultura in Nogales. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Igera.
Hi, I'm Robert Paulson. I live at 11 Azteca Court. That's Nogales, out near Lake Patagonia. As you've heard from other speakers here today, I'm in a similar situation. I received a letter from South 32 Hermosa Project that my, the water table for my well may drop sometime in the near future, as much as 10 feet or more. And amongst some of the things that they've offered is to provide some resources, probably some information where I could buy water, or they wanna monitor my well. Now, this is a company that's, when they're running full speed, is gonna use up to 6.5 million gallons of water daily to process their mine. And they wanna monitor my well. I just don't get it. But anyway, I also want to recognize and thank the City Council of Tucson for nixing the project blue, citing, among other things, the problems of public concern, but an opposition, but also the damage that they would do to the water system there in a fragile desert environment, which I think we probably share some of that environment right here. And obviously, there's gonna be a lot of water use and a lot of water pumped back into the system that's gonna reach our rivers and our lakes. So another issue I see, I live pretty close to State Route 82, which, in spite of the recommendation that these trucks use Highway 19 rather than 82, it seems that they're just growing the traffic more and more and more. Now, I understand that the South 32, when it's running full speed, may add another 80 to 100 trucks per day on State Route 82. Well, I drive State Route 82 a lot, and I see a lot of trucks veering over the yellow line. I also think at 55 miles an hour on a two-lane undivided scenic road, you're heading for a serious accident. The trucks are required to be sealed. I doubt if these seals will withstand a serious accident and a rollover. So you could count on the contamination from the manganese dust to spoil your air, your water, and your food as it spreads out over the community. It's very fine stuff, fine, blows through the air, and it's gonna be a real problem. The cleanup, obviously, is gonna be very difficult and expensive, and you'll be rerouted, God knows where, to get to wherever you had to go.
Excuse me, Mr. Paulson, your three minutes are up.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Ms. Susan Weddington.
Thank you for this opportunity to talk with you. I am also a homeowner that's been affected by the mine and its water. My name is Susan Weddington. I live at 333 Harshaw Creek Road outside Patagonia, and I've lived there for over 30 years. For the past three years, I have lived without potable water in my house because of the change in water chemistry of my well. My well is within 200 feet of Harshaw Creek. It is four and a half miles downstream from the mine. I've done my due diligence to try to figure out if my system is the problem. Now I have evidence that suggests it is related to the mining activities. The mining activities began in 2017. In 2021, I started to see problems with my well, where I have an intermittent iron sludge problem that has destroyed my entire water system, has taken any water out of my house that I can use. I'm dependent upon the Patagonia Fire Department to deliver water for me, and it's, the impacts continue to get worse. I talked with the mine, joined their mine monitoring program, and asked for help. They refused to help me figure out what's going on. So I now work with a hydrogeologist who works with ADEQ with the state of Arizona and with scientists from the universities of Arizona. The most recent impact that I'm experiencing is something that I think will not only be my personal challenge, but the community's and my neighbors' challenge. For the first time ever, I have lead in my water, and then the amount of lead is over 3,000% over the maximum contaminant level for drinking water. I believe water quality and having access to water quality is a critical topic for this board to discuss and to govern. I would like to read my final concern, which is expressed by Pat Reisner, the president of South 32 Hermosa, in a paid advertisement in the Nogales International Paper on June 10th of this year. He states, "First, we don't anticipate any of Hermosa's water management, whether it's water quality or water access, to impact local residents. I'm here to say my impacts are real, and they're increasing." Mr. Reisner also states in his paid advertisement, "We are committed to everyone having safe access to water. My clean, dependable well water was taken away from me over three years ago. Throughout that time, I have not had potable water in my house. I may be one of the first affected, but I won't be the last, and I'm asking you to address these concerns so that we have recourse without having to follow a legal route. Thank you for your attention."
Thank you, Ms. Weddington. Okay, that was the last call to the public. And ladies and gentlemen, thank you for participating in Call to the Public. Our next item is number four, presentation. Item one is a presentation by Clark Crowder, Senior Retirement Specialist with Nationwide Retirement Solutions regarding the proposed addition of the Arizona State Retirement System ASRS and Public Safety Personnel Retirement System PSPRS 457B Retirement Plans to the City of Nogales. Mr. Kramer?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Yes, I believe it was probably four months ago when I told you I was going to start inquiring about our retirement plans for our employees. And with that stated, it took me a few months, but we certainly are getting in that pathway because only 20% of our employees have some sort of alternative retirement plan, as stated. We are working on that. We obviously are bringing that into our onboarding, because a lot of our new employees for the past five years didn't know that existed, including myself when I was hired. So with that said, as I promised you, I'm starting to move on new directions. Certainly, I'm, thank you, Clark, and certainly it's your podium, sir.
Thank you, Joel. Again, I'm Clark Crowder, and with Nationwide Retirement Solutions, and we administer your current deferred compensation plan for the city. And as the city manager mentioned, you have not a great participation rate, and we wish to improve that for you. And the old plan was a good plan in its day, but Nationwide also administers the Arizona State Retirement Systems 457 Plan and the Public Safety Retirement Plan, or the 457 Deferred Compensation Plan, which would include elected officials, police, fire, and so on. The difference between the two plans, really, I mean, if apples and apples were set next to each other, it's really the fee cost, the basis, that Nationwide collects for their fees. In the Arizona State Retirement Systems Plan, our explicit asset fee is .06. In the Public Safety Plan, it's .05. Now, all three of the plans have multiple different types of investment options, but they're all very similar in that aspect. The standard plan that we have with the city, because it's based on the city's assets alone, the asset fee that we charge is .85. But if you, if you act on the proposed Arizona State Retirement Systems Plan and the Public Safety Plan, more money will stay in your accounts to earn interest for you for the future, rather than coming out in higher fees. With the office of the city manager and the HR department, we would like to, you know, help people, encourage them to save additional money for retirement, and adding the ASRS Plan and the Public Safety Plan, which most of you are already familiar with with your defined benefit programs, this might encourage them to save additional money for retirement. I won't take a lot of your time, because you already have one of our plans, but I would rather see you put in these two new plans and have lower fees. Nationwide would, will collect lower, but it's better for your employees, and you get to join the plans that are a larger asset balance, so you get the reduction of fees. And the nice thing about the two other plans is it removes the fiduciary responsibility from the board here as monitoring or having these retirement accounts to Nationwide and ASRS and Public Safety. So it relieves you of that burden of being a fiduciary on these types of retirement plans. It's picked up by Nationwide and your pension associations. The current employees that are in the plan, it's about 40. We have about 40 people in the plan. The assets are about $850,000. But if you join these plans, because we're talking billions of dollars in our plan, you enjoy the also reduction in the fee cost for you as an employee of the city and for all your employees with the city. I can't stress that it's, I believe the ASRS Plan and the Public Safety Plans are the best plans in the nation, just because of the fee structure. We don't get any reimbursements from the fund houses. We have an explicit fee, and that's all that Nationwide collects. So the more money in your plans mean it can grow faster, and I would rather see your employees with additional money in their retirement and not need it in retirement, than retire and need additional money for retirement. We don't normally see individuals working at Walmart or other places when they're 75, 80 years old, because they made a bad decision of planning for retirement. It's just they probably had a good plan, it's just throughout their retirement, things change. Inflation goes up, cost of living goes up, and to maintain your lifestyle, what you're used to, it's always a good idea to save those additional monies for retirement. All your employees have mandatory retirement accounts. As state statute, they must participate in ASRS, elected officials, public safety retirement, and so on. This is the supplemental plan, which allows them to choose how much they want to save for retirement, make changes to their contributions, to their investments. And I've never seen anybody come to me afterward in retirement and say, "I really regret saving additional money for retirement." Usually, they tell me, "Boy, I wish I would've saved more money, or I would've started saving more money earlier in my career." None of them ever say, "Gosh, I can't use that additional money." None of them ever say, "Gosh, I can't use that additional money." I always tell people, it sounds kind of bad, but the more money you have in retirement, probably your retirement's going to be that much better, okay? So saving that additional money on their own is key for them to maintain their lifestyle in retirement after they've given up their paychecks from their employer. They have to have that additional money to maintain that lifestyle in retirement. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number two is a presentation by Carolyn Schaefer from the Patagonia Area Resource Alliance, PARA, on the Hermosa Project Draft Environmental Impact Statement. Councilwoman Maudette?
What? Yes.
Yes, I place this, Mayor, on the agenda, and I'm glad to see you here, Carolyn, and I'm glad to see that some of the ParaPeople personnel are here, too. Thank you for being here.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. And thank you to all the council members and to the staff and to the members of the public who are here today. I'm Carolyn Schaefer. I am a board member with Patagonia Area Resource Alliance, an organization that was founded late in 2011. I joined the board in 2012. This is important work because we are working to protect our natural resources. And I pause because this first screen says that mega drought is real and species extinction is real. These are the realities that we have to be aware of with every decision that we make. Next slide, please. I have to push it? Okay. Oh, no, somebody else is going to... Okay, there's one before that. Am I supposed to do something or somebody else? Is that what I did? Sorry? Did I go back? Oh, look at that. Okay. Yay Technology. Okay. This is a picture of the Sonoyta Creek watershed, and it has at the juncture of five different biomes. And so we have more than 100 federally threatened endangered and sensitive species in the Patagonia Mountains. It is recognized as a global biodiversity hotspot by scientists and one of the top five regions in the entire world most in need of research and protection for species survival. It is also a cultural resource area. Our county has an incredible cultural background for many, many reasons. And because of the natural resources that exist here, we have been inhabited forever by the ancestral people. Okay. All right. So what I'm here to tell you about today is the federal process that happens with respect to the proposed mine project in the Patagonia Mountains. The National Environmental Policy Act, or NEPA, was signed into law in January of 1970. NEPA requires federal agencies to assess the environmental effects of their proposed actions prior to making decisions. This policy requires the federal government to use all practicable means to create and maintain conditions under which humans and nature can exist in productive harmony. And I'm not going to read this word by word for everybody in the audience. The members of the council have a printout of this PDF, so I won't read it word for word. And if any members of the audience would like to have a copy of this PDF, you can go to our website, patagonialiance.org, and right there on the landing page, you can click and get a PDF of this presentation. On May 9th, the Forest Service published the draft environmental impact statement for the Hermosa Minerals Project operated by Australian Mining Company, South 32. The public comment period ended on June 23rd. I'm going to read these organizations because I want you to understand that the signatories to the organizational comments are local, regional, and national organizations, all interested in protecting our natural resources. And it is important for you to hear the names. Patagonia Air Resource Alliance, Arizona Mining Reform Coalition, Borderlands Restoration Network, Calabasas Alliance, Center for Biological Diversity, Sienega Watershed Partnership, Dark Sky International Southern Arizona Chapter, Defenders of Wildlife, Earthworks, Friends of Santa Cruz River, Friends of Sonoyta Creek, Save the Scenic Santa Rita's, Sierra Club Grand Canyon Chapter, Sky Island Alliance, Tucson Bird Alliance, Wildlife Corridors. The organizational comments state that the draft EIS and proposed project approval violates various federal laws and regulations, including, but not limited to, the Organic Act, the Forest Management Act, the National Environmental Policy Act, Endangered Species Act, Land Policy Management Act, and other laws, regulations, and policies that are noted in the comments. The proposed operation of the Hermosa Project on public lands requires the highest level of environmental protections because the impacted public lands are part of the Madrean Pine Oak Woodland, the global biodiversity hotspot that I mentioned. The draft environmental impact statement failed to fully analyze the baseline conditions of all potentially affected resources: water, air, wildlife, cultural, and recreation. It failed to fully analyze the direct and indirect impacts of the project to all potentially affected resources. It failed to fully analyze the cumulative impacts of the project. It failed to fully analyze the no-action alternative. The conclusion is that before considering whether to approve the project or any other related use of the public land, the Forest Service must prepare and submit for public review a revised draft environmental impact statement, meeting the requirements stated in these organizational comments. Para coordinated a team of about two dozen subject matter experts to review the draft environmental impact statement. Topics covered included air quality, biodiversity, cultural resources, dark skies, environmental justice, public health, roads and public safety, tailings and paste backfill, and water and Again, I am going to mention some of the things that are in these comments. The comments themselves are 221 pages long and contain the science and the data that underscores the reason we are asking for all of these. And in addition to the document that you have here that gives you a summary, I will also forward to your city clerk the 221-page document in case you like reading science and data, et cetera. There is also a 40-page, easier-to-read summary. And then you have this document you can refer back to. This document is horrifying by itself. So the organizational comments, as I said, are 221 pages. 77 of those pages are about the water concerns. Almost 35% of the document addresses water, and you have heard from many people today already about the water impacts that are being felt. There are issues about the financial assurance and bonding being insufficient. There are serious concerns about the water quality and contamination, very serious concerns about the groundwater modeling issues. There was inappropriate model selection that was used, according to the water experts who reviewed this document. There are calibration issues. There is also a major question in that it appears that none of the experts that were presenting this information on behalf of the mining company are registered Arizona geologists. We have insufficient information about our groundwater. Half of the county is in an active management area, which you are over here. The other half of the county is not, and there's very little known about that. This map on this slide shows a pink area. The pink area is a very high biologically diverse area based on information from natureserve.org. It is right where the mine activity is proposed. Of those 221 pages, biodiversity is 54 pages, or almost 24.5% of the document. This project, if approved as currently proposed, could push several already imperiled species closer to extinction in the United States, representing a critical conservation failure. The current environmental review is legally inadequate, scientifically indefensible, and morally bankrupt by prioritizing short-term mining interests over species survival. South 32's definition of sustainability is wholly inadequate in this global biodiversity hotspot, and the humans are at great risk. Air quality. The draft environmental impact statement fails to meet requirements under the Clean Air Act, the Organic Act, the National Forest Management Act, and the Coronado National Forest Management Act, and other issues as well. Critical analysis gaps are the air quality-related values using limited screening. Public health, no analysis of health impacts from hazardous pollutants beyond manganese despite emissions of carcinogens. There are mobile sources and deposition impacts. Deposition means the air that is poisoned is going to be deposited on the soils and on the animals, and the humans will be breathing it. There are concerns about the methods that were used. The bottom line with respect to air quality is that the draft environmental statement is fundamentally deficient in the air quality analysis, and the Forest Service may lack authority to approve the project, given the predicted air quality guidelines. With respect to public health, in addition to the air quality concerns mentioned, there are high water contaminant risks. You've heard one person tonight who's already dealing with water contamination. Emergency preparedness gaps. I understand that the Community Protection and Benefits Agreement Group, the city of Nogales, has a representative on that group, as does the town of Patagonia and Santa Cruz County. There was recently a study group about emergency preparedness across the county, and it brought up a lot of concerns. And that document should be available to you as a part of the group that is working to come up with that agreement. There are also critical regulatory and oversight issues, hazardous mysterious storage, self-monitoring by South 32. We need independent monitoring, not the company telling us, "Don't worry, little girl. Everything's okay." Tailings and paste backfill. Hermosa's tailings management plan is fundamentally flawed and premature for environmental review. The combination of missing basic data, unrealistic assumptions, contradictory information, and massive underestimation of failure consequences suggests the project requires substantial additional technical development before proceeding with regulatory approval processes. Public safety and transportation. The draft EIS lacks sufficient detail, enforcement mechanisms, and mitigation strategies to address the significant transportation and public safety risks associated with this large-scale mining operation in a sensitive environmental and scenic area. Dark skies. Light pollution from the mine poses serious threats that extend far beyond aesthetic concerns, affecting scientific research, wildlife ecosystems, human health, and local Cultural heritage. The project area was acquired as public lands through the Treaty of Godalgo and Treaty of La Mila. These treaties contain ongoing legal obligations to protect indigenous rights. But the draft environmental impact statement incorrectly states that tribes have no land or treaty rights in this area. Environmental justice. I suspect many of us are aware that Santa Cruz County has a documented history of environmental injustices from resource extraction. Any energy transition must prioritize human health, environmental protection, and social justice rather than purely economic factors, ensuring local communities are actively involved in decision-making processes. We refuse to be a sacrifice zone. This isn't a question of stopping the mine. This is protecting our natural resources, which protects our people and which protects the nature-based restorative economy that we have in this county that is strong. And this isn't just something happening over in the Patagonia Mountains. Everyone in this room and living in this city will be significantly impacted by this. What can you do as city council members? Your city is part of the ongoing conversations with the town of Patagonia, Santa Cruz County, and South 32 about designing protections and benefits. I suggest that you involve the 16 organizations who were signatory to this document, who bring independent expertise to share with you the concerns that need to be addressed. I thank you for your attention. It isn't fun to bring this level of news, but we are facing a disaster, and we need to mitigate it. Thank you for your attention, and I was told if you had any questions, I am available for those.
Councilwoman Maudette, go ahead.
Carolyn, thank you. Thank you for your presentation. I know this draft EIS statement is a very large document. It's over 700 or 800 pages, something like that, right?
The draft document itself took me about three reams of paper to print out, so it's just about 1,500 pages. And that wasn't the mine plan of operations, which has a couple more hundred pages.
Yeah. So I was not aware of all these organizations that you shared with us. Have you sat down with South 32 with one representative of these organizations, with Mr. Reisner?
I have participated in the original community advisory panel started by South 32 roughly three years, more than four, three years ago now. Four, you know, time is weird. And I had the opportunity at each monthly meeting to speak about all of these concerns and what the organization was doing at the state and the federal level with respect to air quality, et cetera. And when that original advisory panel first started, there were 15 members. And nine of the members from the rest of the county were like, "Yes, jobs and economy. Let's make this happen." It didn't take them very long, a number of months of me replying, "Here are the air quality issues. Here are the water issues. Here's what we're doing at the state and federal level," before everyone came to understand that the jobs and economy come at an incredible environmental cost. that the jobs and economy come at an incredible environmental cost. South 32 then disbanded the original community advisory panel, and I will share those letters also with you so you can see. Because Mr. Reisner said in that letter, "We're disbanding this because there are people on this panel who have a conflict of interest, who are working to slow down our permits," otherwise known as protecting our natural resources. So the answer, the short answer is yes. There have been attempts to have discussions.
And I also share your concern with placing economic security over our environment. I think it's a very, the balance between those is, like you just said, it comes at a high price. So we need to find solutions, Carolyn, to mitigate this situation. It's something that I take very seriously, and it's very hard because trying to figure out a document at 70 years, you know, from today is very hard. And we have to, we have to be very careful how we, how we go about in doing things, Carolyn. It's not something that we can just not pay attention to. If anyone here on the council is very familiar with all these issues. And it is concerning because we tend to see the big stake, you know, the 900 jobs and whatnot. But I am personally trying to help this community, Carolyn, and trying to figure out how, you just said it, how to mitigate the situation. And it's very hard. It is, it is very hard. I'm not saying it's easy, but especially this document that you've mentioned right now, it is a very large document. It's an overwhelming document. And not everyone is geared or wired to read such a big document because, I mean, it's a lot of information that, it's beyond most people, the understanding of most people. But I am here as a councilman to help all you environmentalists, help you, and try to come to some type of understanding and protection for everyone, for town of Patagonia, city of Nogales, and the county. We are working on it, so we, like I said, it's not easy. It's very hard. It's very hard. It's a very touchy subject matter. But I was not aware of all these nonprofit organizations that were involved in this. So thank you, Carolyn.
Thank you, Councilwoman Bonilla. I appreciate that, and I repeat the offer to speak with those organizations as the city is in the process of drafting, attempting to draft a protection and benefits agreement. We're essentially a guinea pig. This is a major operation. This is one of the few protections and benefits agreements being negotiated anywhere. And so we're not just doing it for our community. We're doing it as an example for others. And again, I strongly repeat, please talk with these experts who read all those documents and outlined for you to hear today the significant concerns and can perhaps give some advice on the protections that are necessary. Thank you.
First of all, thank you, Carolyn. I really appreciate. One of the reasons I asked you to present is because I really believe, you know, that we need to hear both sides of the issue in order for us to, as people sitting on the dais, make a just decision. The mine's here to stay. You and I've talked about it at length about this. But what do we do to protect our water resources? And this is one of the reasons I wanted you to present, so that you can, you know, talk to us a little bit about what Para is doing for the protection of our environment and our water. But I have one question. I'm not very involved in the community agreement, a dialogue that's taking place between the entities you just talked about, which includes the city of Nogales. I know it's going to come to us sooner or later. But I have a question for you, and legal too. How legally binding is this community agreement? And maybe it's a question for our attorney. I don't know. In fairness, Rodney just is sitting in this meeting here. I'm not sure. I don't, I know how lawyers work. They don't like surprise, surprises, and they always like to do the research before they give an opinion. I know that. So, you know, I've asked this question already. You and I talked a lot at length about the community agreement, but is it legally binding? Mr. Rodney?
I would have to look.
You would have to look at the agreement, yeah.
It's impacts with respect to the city and what the city's interests would be in that agreement.
Yeah.
That is something, that's something I can look into.
Yeah. And I thought you were going to answer it that way because, you know, we haven't really analyzed it or looked at it. We haven't. Maybe some people that are in this committee have really looked at the details, and it's part of the collaboration that's taking place to develop it. But it would be really interesting to see if it is legally binding, and so that's one question. Do you know, I'm sure this is not the first community agreement that's been developed between mines across the world, how legally binding is it, in your opinion?
Well, I will honor your city attorney. My background is business management, and I spent 30 years in law firm management. That's why I like to say I'm good at herding ducks. So it is my understanding that it is intended that this will be a legally binding document.
That's the intention of it, yeah.
But your city attorney will be able to look at that and give you the formal opinion that, yes, it is.
Yeah, I'm not done. Just a minute's all. The next question is, very quickly, is, you know, it's hard to say no to money, you know? And I see all these, you know, the mine supporting a lot of programs out there, from the schools to, you know, government entities and so forth. It's hard. It's hard. Like you say, we're a poor community here, or someone said it earlier, we know that. And it's hard. It's hard to say no when you're going to be given all these funds to run programs and all the events that are going on. And I see it. I see the South 32. It's all over the place. But are we, are you, is Para going into the schools and talking to our teachers and our kids about what you just talked about? You know, are you presenting the other side of protecting our environment and our water resources? Because, you know, we could have all the jobs, like I said, you know, water drives job creation and economy. We need our water. You know, we can, we can talk about, you know, we're going to create all these jobs and so forth, but our water resource is far more important. You know, we got to have water to create all these jobs. So is Para going into our schools and talking to our children and our, and our teachers about protecting our environment and our water resources?
Para is a very small nonprofit organization with an even smaller budget. We are trying to make the adults aware first. But a key thing, I think, for Para is working with those other conservation organizations. We're not doing this alone. Working with both Friends of Sonoyta Creek and Friends of Santa Cruz River, those two organizations are the ones doing the water monitoring and the springs and seeps monitoring. Calabasas Alliance has now installed air quality monitors around here, and that organization is doing the air quality, beginning the air quality monitoring. And I know Calabasas has also done some programs at the schools. So that is also beginning to happen. But I would like to also mention, yes, South 32 is writing a lot of checks to everybody. But I'd like you to have this perspective about that. The amount of grants that we, the taxpayers, have given to South 32 and the checks they've written to us, I'd have to get you the precise numbers, but based on my initial estimation, they've written checks to us that amount to about 1% of the millions, hundreds of millions of dollars that we, the taxpayers, have granted to the mine company. And another outrageous thing is oil and gas companies have to pay royalties on what they extract. Mining companies pay no royalties on the minerals they extract from this country's.
That's why the law is written.
That's the way the law is written right now. Yes. So, yes, it does look like a lot of money, but the cost is our air, our water, our future.
Councilwoman Bonilla?
Just a comment on the question from Councilwoman Montiel. The document, those documents will never get signed unless all parties are in agreement and that legal looks at that first, and our city manager. So it's not just that living document is going to be produced. I mean, town of Patagonia has their concerns, we have our concerns, and the county has our concerns. They're not the same concerns, but nevertheless, they are concerns. So none of that will be signed by anyone until all parties have agreed to agree, I guess, at this point. And it's, like I said, it's something that's not easy.
No.
And I know, but to her question is, yeah, legal will be eventually involved in this.
Anybody else? Thank you, Ms. Sheper.
Thank you very much for your attention and your concern. Thank you.
Going to item number three, presentation by Leslie Mota from Goxteen News Network on how blockchain and cryptocurrency technologies can expand the financial access in underserved border communities. Topics include digital identity, remittance, remote income, and community-based funding as tools to promote economic opportunity and global connection.
Hello, everyone. Good afternoon or good evening. Leslie Mota, I'm with Goxteen News Network. And I recently moved here a couple of months ago, and in moving here, I came from the crypto world, and I understood that there isn't a lot of information here about crypto. So in a border town where the access to traditional banking is limited and economic opportunity is scarce, crypto offers a lifeline. So here, one of the things that I learned is that the banking is very, very, almost non-existent for a lot of the community members and whatnot, and crypto offers kind of like a peer-to-peer. So what is cryptocurrency? Cryptocurrency is a form of digital money that operates on a technology called blockchain. So unlike traditional currency that's issued and controlled by banks or governments, crypto is more decentralized. So if I establish something that's called a wallet right now, you establish something that's called a wallet, then I would be able to transfer you funds right away, eliminating the middlemen. Some of the cryptocurrency that is out there, there's Bitcoin, Ethereum, Alcoins, meme coins, which we are going to discuss this a little bit further later. How can crypto help a border town? So the way that it can help a border town is through financial inclusion, economic opportunity, education and empowerment, and cross-border trade. So with financial inclusion, you will have access to digital wallets without needing a bank account, economic opportunity. You're able to do remote work for global crypto and Web 3 projects, which means you work remote, and you are able to get paid from any company worldwide. With education and empowerment, we upskill our youth, adults, in the blockchain, DeFi coding and digital literacy, and there are a lot of companies out there that do teach that. Cross-border trade merchants can accept crypto from both sides of the border. So if you have some companies that are in Mexico that you're working with here or vice versa, then you're able to make payment, collect payment, vice versa, without banking. Crypto can also help border towns with community-led projects. You know, we can educate on what it looks like to launch local tokens or DAOs to fund any projects, and identity and ownership where use decentralization IDs to provide documentation to those who track it or whatnot. How crypto has helped the border town recently is we actually partnered up with a project that is also known as a meme coin or meme token on the blockchain Ethereum. They generously donated over 100 burritos to help feed the hungry, which we were able to distribute across Nogales, Arizona. So we did go around to feed the hungry. We actually also went over to Crossroads, Mission Crossroads, and were able to also donate burritos there to help feed the hungry or families that were not, that didn't have anything to eat for that evening. So that kind of opened the eyes of what more we were able to do within this space. Now Mambo Project, they are a community that's, it's a driven meme token on the Ethereum blockchain that embodies unhinged energy. They're very fun. I mean, there's a lot of different ones. So part of the leadership team, David Goxteen, he is the CEO of Goxteen News Network, and I work alongside with him. I do a lot of journalism down here. I did speak at the United Nations. I did collaborate on writing a book for Web 3. And then I also host shows on the Goxteen News Network. And we have recently partnered up with Salo Bonilla to bring Crypto 101 education series here at the border, where it is going to be a pre-series for the community, for the public, for the people. And we are going to educate them on cryptocurrency, how to create wallets, you know, pros and cons, how to stay safe, because you are going to be, you know, your own entity, you're going to do self-governance, and we want to make sure that we educate and teach the people the proper way. There are scams out there, you know, how to look for scams, how to protect yourself from scams. And we wanted to bring this series where it's not going to cost the community anything. We will have sponsors, donors that will donate. We actually have some of the Mambo community that are going to be donating that coin Ethereum to help some of the community download a wallet and then transfer some of the funds. That way, you see firsthand how that looks like. That's it. Any questions?
Go ahead. When are you going to be setting up these workshops?
These workshops are going to take a little bit. So we are looking to set up the workshops probably going into September. We will be getting guest speakers. We are going to be looking for some people within the industry that are very savvy and seasoned in different areas of the crypto world. Like different areas meaning how to protect your wallet, how to look out for scams, how to do analysis on the charts, what to look for. So in looking for different speakers to be onboarded for that series, I think the earliest probably would be about the second week of September or so. You're welcome.
Councilwoman Doyle?
Yes, sir. Are there going to be any cost? Is it going to be open to the public? How many people are?
It is going to be open to the public. There might be a limit per session, and we can hold a few sessions depending, too, on the area and the location that we obtain for the education series.
There's no cost to the public?
No cost to the public, no, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Thank you, Ms. Mota.
Thank you so much for having me tonight.
Thank you. Okay, next item, number four, Mr. Kramer.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Turn on my mic, right? Thank you, Vice Mayor. And I stated to you, I believe, a couple months ago, certainly that end of the dais over there was certainly interested in this presentation. I think the three of you over there. I think the three of you over there, certainly not excluding the two over here as well. But I will say this, that after we had that conversation, Inova was approached that they would present. Juan Guerra, who's on vacation right now, did approach to them. I spoke to Mr. Tang, who called me three weeks ago. I told him be ready to present, okay. Emails, correspondence, as of yesterday, I received an email that they did not have anybody to present tonight. I will say this, because it is something that we have a public record, we have a contract that you guys approved, we signed. The start date was July 15th. We were approached to give them an extension of that contract, which the completion date was 120 days, which is November 12th. Mr. Estes and myself declined to do that. We go as is. If we were going to do any of that, as I told you, was counsel, it's a new day with me being here. I will not do any change orders, work orders, change of contracts, unless I do, I bring it to you so you know what's going on. So with that said, the work hasn't started. I did send another email stating, again, the completion date is November 12th, that the presentation for September, October, November is still on, as well as December. The completion date as of right now is November 12th. You did get a copy of the contract. I don't want to go verbatim over that, but I wanted to give you an update of what is going on. For September, I obviously will be more, even more firmer. I don't know how much firmer I can be other than emails and Mr. Estes included, or Rodney, either one of us will continue pushing. If not, we will have, we do have our own people with boots on the ground. We will take pictures of what's transpiring, much like you got the presentation that I was sending from the updates. I think you got those updates from a previous or experience, what we did, which we have on the agenda that we'll talk later. But nevertheless, that's what's transpiring and has started. We are, they are moving forward with this. However, I will ensure then, at the best of my abilities, of my efforts, that we will have presentations, if not from them, at least from our people with pictures, next presentation, which will be in September. But I wanted to give you an update of what's transpiring.
Go ahead, Mr. Doyle.
When I hear our people put boots on the ground, I hope it's a new pair of boots that are out there on the ground and not the same people that in the past have favored that company Inova, that haven't been, I'll just say, as productive or very slippery or things like that. And I, and I hope that you're keeping that in mind, so none of that will continue to happen.
One of the people, one of the persons, people, one of the persons and individuals right now is in this room. I've had our Public Works, interim Public Works Director, involved in this discussion. He, he's already made a visit to that. Also, we have our other person under Juan Guerra, Teresita Camu, who is also going to be visiting that spot as well with pictures.
Thank you. At least you mentioned a couple of new boots on the ground.
There's new boots on the ground that will be overseeing this. Of course, Juan will be also involved, that is through his department as well. But you are certainly welcome, Mr. Doyle, and any other council members to accompany. Just let me know. Certainly, we will be glad to show you or take you over there. I have no problem with driving over there with you as well to be new boots on the ground as well. But if you come with me, you're going to have to wear your steel-toed boots. That's the new policies is what, no, you'll just still, we'll still go over there though. But anyway, that's what's transpiring, so we do have sets of eyes going on. That's the update for Inova. Next time will be more intense.
Councilwoman Bonilla?
Mr. Kramer, I think I speak for not all council members, but I think for most of them. I personally had enough of that company. And I hope, and I hope that we never have no more discussions because all habits, I guess, are hard to break. They get the bid, they win the bid. And then the only reason you found out that they need an extension is because they're a different person. But in the past, it's been different. And so, their projects that they finished lately have been bad. And so, and I'll just use the last one, the Frank Reed. That is a pathetic project that was finished, it's full of patches now. It was made by, I guess, beginners. But regardless of that, I, I think that we need to move on, Mr. Kramer, from that company. I think there are other companies that can, that can finish this job. They're not as, I guess, cheap as, as this company, but we need to really move on as we, as a city, because these, these projects cost a lot of money. And the last, this Camino del Sol project, Mr. Guerra got money from WIFA, from CDBG funds from here and here, he pulled to finish that project. So, and for them to turn around and ask you for an extension, I think it's a slap in the face to the city of Nogales and all, and all our constituents. And me personally, I don't speak for all the council members here, but I know I speak for some of them, I had enough with that company. Again, I'll reiterate, it was asked and the answer was no. Okay? We, we did not give the curfew extension. That stops. It, we've, again, we're stopping this. And to answer your question, as you see what the direction I've been taking is, which the city has not embarked upon, is, it's called state contracts. Other municipalities, counties, school districts follow the same protocol. We're not breaking anything as far as state law goes. And if a, if a company has a state contract with another entity, we can certainly use them. We do not have to go out to bid. We're not violating any Arizona state procurement laws. So to answer your question, sir, we have other methods and we certainly are going to change to those other methods.
Thank you, Mr. Kramer. Item number five is Ms. Abdu. Okay, then we'll go ahead and cancel that item. Okay, we're going to move on to number five, financial monthly report. Mr. Kramer?
Thank you. I, that was the end of the fiscal year budget. Mr. Doyle, you weren't here, right? And Mayor Maldonado, you guys, I didn't reach out to the two of you, but I did explain to everybody else. Jean is out at a conference for chief financial officers in Tucson. She stated if you had any questions regarding the end of the year purchasing, everything went to the way it should have been. We got them in time, there were no after the facts, all the deadlines were met. We shouldn't have any problems with that because we closed out the accounts a week before to get all the purchases done. So there were no invoicing, again, incorrectly. If you have any questions, because again, that was the last of the monies, there wasn't too many purchases in June, that's your financial report. But if you have any questions regarding that, please email me, come in, we can certainly give you, you have copies of it. But if you have any further questions on that, you will get, obviously, we'll get back on track, but she was here, I didn't want to bring her back just for that, because there wasn't too much on it. So certainly, thank you, Vice Mayor, that if you do have any questions, certainly email if you have that, okay?
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor, you have any questions?
Not at the moment, Vice Mayor. Thank you for, you know, doing the meeting. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. You know, just on some items right now, we'll, we'll talk, you know, I'm not sure how, apparently they couldn't hear me, okay? But, you know, continue with, with the, with the discussion items.
Okay, thank you. So we'll move on to item number six, discussion and possible action items. Okay, so item number one is discussion and possible action regarding participation in the proposed national opioid settlements with Alvegan, Amneal, Apotex, Hikma, and Livia, Mylan, Sun, and Zetius, and authorization for the city to complete and submit required documentation by the October 8, 2025 deadline. Mr. States?
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor, Council. So, there have been various settlements that have been struck with some of the opioid manufacturers on a national level. And from there, each state can opt in. And if your state opts in, which Arizona has, then the political subdivisions of the state can then opt in to participate and to basically enter into that settlement agreement, even if your political subdivision hadn't been a prior party to some of the class action and other litigation that gave rise to these settlements. So, this particular one is with the manufacturers that are listed on the agenda and that you've named. Essentially, if the city chose to opt in, it would need to do so and indicate so by October 8th, as you've expressed. The impact of that would be, at that point, the city would then be entitled to receive whatever its share of the funds were calculated to be. Those will be calculated at a future date, once they see who is opting in. Each political subdivision in Arizona that does not opt in will not be able to receive any of those funds. Upon receipt of those funds, each participant forever releases those manufacturers for any future claims related to, you know, the underlying opioid manufacturing and distribution. And then the funds must be spent according to the terms of that national settlement agreement. And so examples of what the funds can be spent on, it's largely, it's programs that can impact the public in terms of opioid use disorder, you know, screening for, for example, inmates who are coming into a correctional facility. Those funds can be used for, for programs and services that would screen them and provide medication-assisted treatments. It can also be used for awareness for the public, education, opioid use disorder, screening and medically assisted treatment for pregnant mothers and for infants. And just, that, that's not exhaustive, you know, but that's kind of gives you an idea as to the, the approved fund uses. Do you have, does any of the council have any questions?
Go ahead, Ms. Councilwoman Bonilla.
Do you have already an outline on how we can use those funds already?
Yeah, as a matter of fact, colleague of mine had provided the exhibit to the settlement agreement. It's Exhibit E, and it is the list of opioid remediation uses. The first one is naloxone or other FDA-approved drug to reduce opioid overdoses. And then it kind of describes what they mean by that. The second is medication-assisted treatment, distribution and other opioid-related treatment. So education programs to youth and the public, increased distribution of these treatment services and their availability to people who are not insured or whose insurance does not cover that otherwise. Education and awareness as well to our first responders, EMT, law enforcement, so that they can recognize that, you know, what they're seeing and interpret it in that light. Treatment and recovery support services, including inpatient and outpatient therapies and treatment. As I mentioned, pregnant and postpartum, screening, treatment services, expanding treatment for neonatal, abstinence syndrome, expansion of warm handoff programs and recovery. So when someone is, for example, you know, hospitalized, to make sure that, that they don't fall off with the, the treatment plan that they're on when they get discharged. Treatment for the incarcerated population, as I described in terms of treat, treatment and screening, prevention programs, you know, media campaigns, evidence-based prevention programs in schools, expanding syringe service programs. I believe that's like where the people can drop off things that, to make sure they're safely disposed of and, and not going to be out there for anyone to inadvertently, you know, become ill or otherwise. That looks like, that's kind of the general list. Yes.
I have a question.
Let me, Mr. Doyle, go ahead, Mr. Doyle.
Is this more of a community effort then? Are we going to be partnering up with maybe our local hospital, Maripossa Clinic, different people, like you said, the schools and whatnot? Is that, is there going to be an outreach program to work together with the community?
Councilman Doyle, that, that appears to be an option, certainly. I think, my reading of these descriptions of the approved uses, and this is all per that nationwide settlement agreement. Of course, if we didn't opt in, then we wouldn't be able to do any of this with those funds. But if we, if we receive those funds, it, it's my understanding, based on the materials that have been provided, that that type of collaboration would not only seem possible, that probably seems like the most likely way that a lot of this would be accomplished. Thank you.
Councilwoman Bonilla? Mayor? Did you have a question?
Yes, thank you. I've been talking to Mr. Estes on this one, it's, you know, it's one of the, you know, it's an opportunity for us to educate our community, you know, if the fund, we don't know how much the funds are going to be, we don't know how much, how much, you know, the time that we, we need to, to use the funds in. But it, I think it was, you know, like, you do if you, you do, you do maybe don't, and you do if you do, and, and, you know, just trying to be a step ahead and, and hopefully, you know, we could use those funds to educate the community. You know, I know our law enforcement uses, you know, classes, those classes at, at the schools, and are there and all that. So, I, you know, Mr. Estes recommends that we go for it. You know, I just want to let everybody know that I had already talked to him about it, and that was his recommendation. Do you agree, Rodney?
Yeah, it's, yes, Mayor, that's, that's my understanding. I also, I think I failed to mention, although I think it's kind of customary, when we receive, you know, funds of this nature, grant funds, there are reporting requirements to ensure what we've received and how we've spent it, to make, to ensure that it comports with the appropriate use guidelines.
Anybody else? So, Mr. Stage, do you want us to make a motion to approve this?
I, if you would like to make a motion.
You have a motion?
I'd make a motion to approve this agenda item.
I second.
You have a motion and a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstaining? Motion carries. Go out to item number two, discussion and possible action for approval of the implementation of the police general orders in the Nogales Police Department. Chief Jimenez?
Vice Mayor, good evening, council members of the staff, audience. This agenda item was put on the agenda by Mr. Estes. Initially, it was going to be a executive session, but after discussion with him, he said it should be a regular agenda item. And the history on this is what it basically entails is our policies for the police department. We call them general orders because they're basically how we do business. We've been in this endeavor, unfortunately, for six years, and it finally got to this provision where we're going to hopefully, after your approval, implement them in the department and actually have some up-to-date working general orders. That's kind of the nutshell of what's going on. The general orders basically tell us how to basically do business day in and day out regarding a different type of situations we're faced, from a simple from a simple investigating a break into a car to something as, you know, as severe as a major incident. Is there any questions regarding the particular of the general orders?
Any question?
I'll say this, that, that Mr. Estes looked at this. He gave his thumbs up to it.
He said it was fine. He didn't have any problem with this.
So we, we, Chief sent it to the, to Mr. Estes, and it went forward, and that's to you guys. So if you spend time reading it, I congratulate you.
Yeah.
And just to echo Mr. Kramer's statements, these general orders were actually authored by a law firm in Phoenix called Edwards and Amato, which in turn were provided to us where we basically tailored for the police department. They were presented eventually to the law firm of Pearson Coleman, Mr. Estes. And they reviewed it to make sure there was no conflict with our personnel manual, and they're up to date with state law, federal law, and anything else that applies. So Mr. Kramer is correct, and they've been vetted by actually not only Mr. Estes, but a law firm that actually authored them.
Yeah, I, I started reading the, the article, and after page 1,353, I, I stopped because, yeah, I, you know, I didn't get any sleep for two days, so.
It's, it's actually 357 pages, if I remember correctly, because that stuck to my mind.
Yeah, I remember the 353, yeah. Anybody else? Okay, can I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the implementation of the general orders of the police department.
Second.
Well, motion and a second. All those in favor, a discussion, I'm sorry. A discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No abstaining? Motion carries.
Thank you, Chief.
Item three, discussion and possible action. In-kind support submitted by Circles of Peace for the 13th Annual Nogales Bicycle Classic Event to be held on Morley Avenue on Saturday, October 25th, 2025, from 7:00 AM to 2:00 PM.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I placed this item on the agenda because I wholeheartedly believe that, you know, Circles of Peace has, have been working along with the city for years and years. And Blanca is here, the Director of Circles of Peace, and she can come up here and explain a little bit to you why it's important for, to collaborate with the city of Nogales. She's asking for 3,308.76 of in-kind, which basically is for security, because the rest of the stuff, the materials and, and all that stuff, the city of Nogales has like chairs and tables and all that stuff. So it's basically just for security. So it behooves us to support this endeavor by Circles of Peace. They bring in a lot of, why don't you talk? Come on up, yeah. Yeah, you're better at describing the, the program and the event. And I know that you've been doing a great job along with Judge Mailey, who probably started it, right? Okay, thank you.
Okay, there you go. And thank you, everyone, for having me here. So as Lisa explained, Circles of Peace is a nonprofit organization. We started 20 years ago. And the, the reason that we still exist in the community is because we invest in the community. We really care about our community. I just listened to the lawyer about the opiate settlement. We have done that work in the community for seven years, más o menos, more or less. And we have trained law enforcement, Nogales Police, Nogales Fire Department, Sheriff's Department, everyone in the law enforcement in the use of naloxone, how to recognize, like, you know, symptoms for opiate use, opiate use disorders. And we provide a lot of hours in prevention work at the schools, inside the schools, outside the schools. We work in the restorative justice process, which includes all the community, government, and members of people who is, people who is affected by the criminal justice, families, children, people who is coming out from jail. So Circles really invest a lot of the resources, all of our resources in the community. And education and safety is our priority. So Nogales Bicycle Classic is the annual fundraising racer than the Circles of Peace does to fundraise funds for these programs, family programs, and all the programs that we offer to the community with non, non cost. We don't charge anything for the services we provide. And we have, have a long history of partnership with City of Nogales and other departments from City of Nogales, including Nogales Police Department and again, Nogales Fire Department. So I'm here on behalf of Circles of Peace because, and, and the Nogales Bicycle Classic, because without your help, we cannot raise our goal for $30,000 that we raise every year to be, to continue with these programs that we have, including the, the center, as we call it, El Centro, that is located in Western Avenue, which is part of the collaboration we have with City of Nogales that provides a lot, about 1,200, impact 1,200 individuals directly every year, including children, seniors, and, and women. So that's Circles of Peace, that's the Nogales Bicycle Classic. We have received your generosa, I don't know how to say it, generous contribution, in-kind services for Nogales Police Department to take care of this event, the safety of the strip, the safety of the riders. And most important is that this event brings about 400 riders to Nogales, to Santa Cruz County. And most of these 400 riders are not from, from the community. They're coming from all over the United States, Colorado, California, some locals, some also from the state, and they invest in the community. For that day, you will not find any empty room, vacancy room in the hotels or restaurants. Everything is packed, and it's because for the 13 years that we have been pushing this event into outside Santa Cruz County. We want the Santa Cruz County as view as a welcoming, and Nogales as a welcoming city. And again, this event is very expensive, and any contribution, any in-kind, any support that you will offer will be predicated specifically into the community, specifically directly to education and contribute with safety of this community. So I hope that I convince you, if you have any questions.
Questions? Councilwoman Montilla?
No, no, she said it perfectly well. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Doyle? Go ahead, Mr. Doyle.
Yeah, well, no, I want to thank you for, for your presentation and explanation of, because, you know, one of the things that it seems like we're always a little concerned is the gift clause. And apparently, this organization provides a lot more or gives back to the community, where the in-kind service is minimal of, of what the city is giving to, to this activity. Most of all, you have so many people, you have a lot of youth involved in, in this. Keeps them organized, keeps them out of trouble, keeps them in good shape throughout the year, you know, with, with these type of, I guess, I don't know if you call it bikeathons or programs that, and upside from all you do, you know, to raise those funds for the rest of the community. You know, it's a great work. I, I, I thank you for your, for your efforts. And, and I just think that any way the city can support these type of programs and, and our youth and, and being involved in, in different things and, and programs that bring people, you know, either through cultural events or entertainment or sports or whatever it is, it, it's, it's a big asset for the community. Everybody spends money here in the community, with restaurants, gas stations, hotels, whatever it is. And, and so thank you so much for, for being involved in what you are.
So I'm going to need a motion and a second?
Yeah, I, I make a motion to provide in-kind services to Circles of Peace for the amount of 3,308.76 for their Nogales Bicycle Classic. One second.
Any further discussion?
No.
No? Okay, then, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstaining? Motion carries. We'll move to item number four, discussion and possible action. In-kind support submitted by Cultural, Cultural Arts Committee for the Fiesta de Patres event to be held at Karen Park on Saturday, September 13th, 2025, from 5:00 PM to 10:00 PM. Councilwoman Melendez?
Thank you. Yeah, I want to take the opportunity, Sandra Corey is here. Would you like to come over to the podium and explain about the event? I know you don't like to do it, but please.
Good evening to the council members, the city manager, and all the people on the board, and all the audience. My name is Sandra Corey. I'm the treasurer of the Cultural Arts Committee. And our mission is to have festivals that pass all the Mexican traditions and the education to the young ones that they have the family descendant from the Mexican culture. And we help to promote all the traditions that we experience in Mexico and to continue to, to those traditions. But we start putting together different festivals, like Fiesta de Mayo, Dia de Muertos, and Fiesta de Patres. What we do is we involve all the schools. They do artwork, they present dances, they present different songs. We have all these vendors in Nogales that are waiting to register for every event. It's an average of, I will say, 26 to 32 vendors. And the impact for them, I think, is very greatly appreciated from these festivals. Last year, we had the festival at the Nogales High School Auditorium because we didn't have the funds to pay for the stage and for all the costs that we need to provide for these festivals. In average, we spent around $8,000 to $10,000 for each one. And what we ask the city is just to provide for in-kind services that is just basic needs. It's like the portable toilets, the light, some police department to secure the event. And, but we, what comes after that, after every event, is the involvement of the schools, the families that are there, the ambience that we provide for them. We don't have many festivals like that. And it has been a very successful. When we had COVID, we had to go through different, questioning all the people that we impacted through all these festivals. And they were very, very much, I will say, emotional to see how these people were suffering with no, any, any money income into their families. We worked with Circles of Peace during those times to help also their services they had. We provided some stipends to, for them to put together something to sell because they didn't, they lost their jobs. So it's not just a party. It, it has a social impact in our community, and I hope you can consider the help for all these events that we carry through Nogales. Also, Morley Avenue has been impacted really bad after COVID and now with all these policies of the border. And, and it's a, a great presentation of our downtown area that has been suffering a lot. Thank you. You have any questions?
Well, I, I, I just want to make a comment of saying that, to me, it, it's a wonderful event. It's very colorful. I mean, the way everybody that participates, from the smallest to, to, I guess, I don't know, they're, they all seem pretty young, but I.
We have the senior chorus. And we gave them also support, economical support. It's very small, but we try to support all these groups, from the elementary school dancers to the senior groups that participate in these events. We had people hand it up, they told us, you know, thank you for giving us the opportunity. I have all my family here. And, and that's what we do. We're just trying to bring everybody together to have a good time, but at the same time, help the community. Really, it's, it's, it's just incredible that you see a little bit that you do for someone, what it comes back from them. And, and I hope you understand how important these events are.
And I was just going to finish up with saying that, aside from the colorful and everything else, the entertainment and the good times, it all seems to climax that, that, that evening. But I know there's a lot of work into it. There's a lot of participation of all the people involved through, at least a good part of the year, that, you know, again, it helps them. It, it not, it not only, it kind of educates us, or let's say it brings the, the historical part of the different regions of Mexico, of the different colors and pageantries and everything that's involved. But I'm always amazed at the designs of the clothes from, from those area and, and to hear that, that a lot of them are made, you know, by, by, by local people or, or. And, and so I want to thank you for, for that type of colorful events. But above all, that it brings a lot to the community, especially during that, that evening where we're all entertained. And it touches all ages, and it seems to get better every year. So thank you for.
Thank God. Every year, we think, okay, hopefully, we will get funds. We don't look for locals to ask for monetary funds. We try to reach the Arizona Commission on the Arts, other foundations that support us. So that's what we do. Sometimes we really, we don't have, it's very kind of all the artists. They will not charge anything. So as long as we can put it together. The most expensive item is the stage and the sound system also. And you know, when we, we went through the Fourth of July, how expensive that can become. And it's hard, but it's, it's, and all the Cultural Arts Committee members, we are all volunteers. And you saw, we don't do only festivals. We do other concerts, but they go, all the funds, they go totally. We don't keep any money. It goes to Pima College. Last year, we were able to provide 54 scholarships for, for the students there. And you should have heard all the comments of the students that were benefited by all these funds. And it's thanks to the Mexican Council that they provide funds from Mexico. People maybe don't know, but then we match those funds. And that's the way we provided those, those scholarships. So it's, it's, it's a community effort between schools, the city, the Mexican Council, and the members of the Cultural Arts Committee. So thank you, I was here for the deal. But I'm glad that I can explain a little bit to you what we do.
Thank you, Mrs. Corey. You know, I've been on the council for over six years, and every year, that event keeps getting better. And it, it's not only entertaining for the residents of this community, but I see that every year, there's more people coming from the north to visit, to visit us, and, and they enjoy the event, you know. A lot of people that don't want to cross the border and go into Mexico, or they, the, the next thing would be here in Nogales, and they get a little taste of what it is.
Yes, last year, I was very surprised to have a newspaper from France. So you don't know, it's amazing where we, little things can put Nogales in a place.
Yes, and it's good for the tourism, for the.
Yes.
For the community. Okay, any?
Thank you very much.
Any more questions? So can I have a motion in a second?
I make a motion to approve the in-kind donation for-
Cultural Arts.
Yeah, Cultural Arts Commission.
Do you have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. And we move to item number five. Discussion and possible action on the appointment of board members to the City of Nogales Commission on Disability Issues. CODI. Discussion and possible action to approve the appointment of new board members to the City of Nogales Commission on Disability Issues. C O D I. Somebody do- Go ahead, Councilman.
Mayor and council, back in April 2nd, we approved the Commission on Disability Issues. And we appointed Ms. Ramirez as chairperson. So now we get to vote in the first committee or commission members. Enclosing your packets are the names of the people who are, we are proposing or Ms. Ramirez is proposing. So if you have any questions, you can direct them to Ms. Michelle Ramirez.
Any questions? So I guess we're good to- Can I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the members of the Commission of Disability Issues.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Item six. Discussion and possible action to approve the following intergovernmental agreement, IGA, between the Arizona Department of Transportation, ADOT, and the City of Nogales. IGA 25-0011196-1 - improvements to Frank Reid Road with funding in the amount of $1,500,000. - improvements to La Quinta Road with funding in the amount of $1,800,000. And IGA 25-0011197-1 - improvements to Industrial Park Road with funding in the amount of $2,900,000.
I'd like to make a motion to approve these IGAs with ADOT and the City of Nogales.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. No discussion? In that case, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries unanimously. Item seven. Discussion, action, and possible direction to staff on how to proceed with the necessary changes in the septic dumping station in order to comply with the new ADEQ requirements. Mr. Mayor?
That would be my, I brought this on.
Oh, you brought this on?
Yes. Well, I think this is more like discussing so we can hit in a certain direction- Correct. -before we approve anything. Right. Well, as you read the paragraph, correct?
Yeah.
It's just to give me direction of what council would like to take the direction. So yes, Mr. Doyle, certainly it's up to you. It's not up to me. Again, I'm just taking the direction. You'll see the septic dumping as well, as well as the add section E of the ADEQ requirements to this because this is a city ordinance. The city ordinance, as Mr. Estes explained to you, continues as is until we get this revised, approved by you. If we do send it back to me, I'll bring it back for your approval with these added adjustments. But we will continue following the city ordinances as is, as of right now, regarding the septic dumping. Just to give you where we're at because Mr. Estes and I worked on this together. I shortened up the codes just to show you where we needed to plug those in. I didn't want to give you all the codes or the articles of this code, but that's where it's at. Thank you. And I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Doyle.
Mr. Kramer, you know, they're talking about there's some changes with the ADEQ requirements. And is that going to increase the cost for the city to provide that service? The way we've discussed it many times over is, again, and I spoke with John Light again. When we discussed this last time, I was texting, but he wasn't in a meeting. And we've talked about this three times. And I'll bring up just a short, in a short synopsis of this, again, is that we're going to have to sample. We're going to have to buy a refrigerator. If we do get the bottles from this company that's going to do the testing, well, there's going to be a cost to that. It's not going to be a cost if they're charged $500 or $475 per load. They said that the loads or the samples will hold for a week, but they would rather test them within a week. So again, we're going to have to drive up, as I discussed before. A hot, hitting something hot is going to be really the sticky point here is, was it ours from septic dumping? Or is it with the 20-inch pipe from Nogales Sonora? That's the question of the day, right? So what it was recommended is, you better just sample everything and test everything to protect the City of Nogales. Because as you know, and I'm not going to keep bringing this up, the fines could be hefty. And we're talking six-figure fines. We've already covered all that. That's what was stated. That's the recommendation that, again, Joe Estes and I have chatted about. Certainly, I brought in Rodney in this discussion. I don't think he would disagree of what I just stated because that's what we have talked about as well. And Joe brought this up before. I don't want to keep, we keep talking and talking and talking. But I want to bring up the very specifics of this, Mr. Doyle, is that's what in red we would be doing. So if you did give me that direction as a council, when you vote on this, I go back, I bring these changes to this ordinance with, of course, with our attorney, bring it back for you for that approval. Yes. Mr. Kramer, I guess, I know we probably repeat ourselves in certain areas, but one of the concerns as a councilman that I have is the cost to the city. I still don't know when we have to implement and abide by those rules of ADEQ where we have to make an investment on another employee, on getting refrigerators. That what my concern is that we start going along this program, and it's not feasible to continue it down the road, maybe a few months down the road or less. We lose all that investment. And now we have an employee that had hopes of, you know, being a career employee and that we're going to probably have to terminate or maybe he passes the probationary period. Now we're stuck with another employee that we don't need. I don't want to get into that area. I think that we need to look far enough ahead so that we won't make those decisions, which is going to cost the city more in the long run. I'm agreeing with you because, you know, as I tried to be, keep the budget the way it was. And I certainly have the other option is, and this is the other option is, and of course, some of you may not agree to it. And we got pushback. And by the way, I did, as we talked about in the study session last time, I did send, and he will concur with this, because I sent an email to the county manager because it was discussed before that the county would open up the landfill to do this septic dumping. I believe I had a council member present in my office, Mr. Bonilla, who was there when I sent this email. As of right now, I did not get a response. And I just want to make sure that that's on record, Mr. Doyle, because it was discussed, and we discussed that before, that the county was going to take this. As of right now, we have it. So now our options are, do we do this? Or do we just shut down the septic dumping? Because we don't want to incur the cost for the city of what you're referring to. Well, yes, I'm sorry, attorney.
And just as a point of clarification, I noticed that there were kind of two parts to your question. One was, if we're going to engage in this, you know, testing and sampling, when do we have to do that? I believe that the recommendation would be to not accept any septic dumping until that is in place. Because if we allow septic dumping to take place before those precautions and those required measures are in place, we risk those hefty fines that Mr. Kramer mentioned. So in terms of timing, I believe that's the path ahead. The other part being, you know, the foresight, you know? Do we predict that the entities that would conceivably want to engage in this septic dumping, would they be willing to incur the costs that the city cannot subsidize, you know, private entity septic dumping? And so those costs have to be transferred on. Otherwise, it's a gift clause issue, you know, gift of public funds to something like that. And so in terms of, you know, I'm not a market forecaster in terms of, well, if we put all this in place, we hire the staff necessary or assign existing staff or however that works to make this happen. And then, you know, I guess the question is, would the local parties want to then incur those fees and participate in local septic dumping on the city's sewer system?
Again, it goes back, you know, I didn't even cover the part of liability. Liability, but just the fact that the City of Nogales has to put itself in that situation where there's liability, where there's extra costs and increased extra costs. And then we don't know if the program down the road because of that increased extra cost is going to fail. And Nogales gets stuck again with the initial investment. So I would, right, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that effective immediately, we stop the septic haulers dumping with the City of Nogales.
I have a- No. I would just mention that as the agenda is written,
Oh, we can't take action yet?
On how to direct staff.
Okay.
But in terms of making, taking any legal action other than just directing staff on some desired possibilities to explore, let's focus on this path or that path and see where that leads us. I believe that's what our agenda provides for in terms of motions and action.
Well, I'd like to change that motion then to give direction to staff and the general direction of not being involved in the septic hauling. In other words, let's not invest money and take the responsibility of the liability that comes along with it and the cost that comes along with it. So my motion is just to give direction to staff. Where down the road, maybe in the next meeting, we'll put something a little stronger where we can take action on the septic dumping.
Mr. Bonilla?
Mr. Kramer, do you, have you, at any point, once you got all these numbers from ADEQ and seeing what it's going to cost, have you discussed the new fees with any of these septic tank companies at all? Because my concern is, well, one is a legal issue, obviously. But what I'm afraid is, we buy all the equipment and all this, and then they come back and say, well, you know what? We're not, it's just too expensive. You know, it's not viable for us, and we're stuck with all this. So if we suspend it for now and see exactly where we're going, because I think it's kind of dangerous on the legal side. And also, we don't know if these companies, if it's viable. You know, it might be, I think personally, it's going to be way too expensive for them at $500 bucks every truckload. But I would say $600. Okay, well, even worse.
The load.
Okay. So I'm pretty sure it will not be viable for them. So I would think that the right course would be not to go in that direction anymore and accepting any more any septic waste in the City of Nogales. Where the City of Nogales?
I will give you this, that I was leaving it up to council, obviously, to give direction on this. But certainly, legal, we discussed this as well. And my, what I would look at this was, we need to hear this and go further is, as was mentioned, which we probably should do, is shut her down until we get this, bring this back to council with the new ordinance, the new fees, not spend any money, as you said, Mr. Doyle, to incorporate this policy and protocol. It will be in place as an ordinance. Then we'll see what kind of dumping they want to do. They know this is going to be the cost. Then if that's the case, then we'll look about possibly reinvesting in the protocol of buying the refrigerator, everything to that. I don't see, foresee a lot of people wanting to pay this much to dump as opposed to what they're paying now. It's a $500 increase. But again, it is following the requirements from ADEQ as what I W B C stated. And again, I know that this is probably, you don't know if it's going to be hot or not. But again, do we want to take that chance? Do we want to just say, oh, well, let's risk it? You know? I mean, that's the thing that I don't believe in because I don't want to get a penalty to the state of, or excuse me, to the City of Nogales. And that's six figures, could be higher. And then we get into courts. And then these guys get paid more.
Mr. States? Mr. States, before you, I have the mayor trying to ask a question, but we have a motion on the table. Can we continue to discuss before we have a second?
I wanted to inquire some clarification on the motion. So we have a motion, as I understand it. But correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Doyle. And then, Mr. Bonilla, I'll also ask you. The motion, as I understood it from Councilman Doyle, was for staff to explore the path of possibly discontinuing the septic dumping into the city's system altogether. That's the first part of, as I understood it. Is that accurate, Councilman Doyle?
Yes, then. I think with the clarification that the city manager made on this, the best way of approaching it, I think it goes along with also what you mentioned. So whoever wants, you want to take the motion from Mr. Bonilla or myself, the other one can second it. But it's, that's, I think, the course that we should take. That's, in other words, we're giving direction along those lines so that, you know, everything will be on the up and up and cleared. And everybody will understand exactly what's going on and what's involved, including the owners of the septic hauling business. I think they need to know above all, have a meeting with the city manager, letting them know the cost of doing business with the city, what it's going to be in the future.
So that gets to the other point I wanted clarification on because Councilman Bonilla kind of-
Yes, I'm with the mayor.
And I'm not trying to cut you off, Mayor. I also am going to address, we have, I'll just say, it looks like there's appetite for some discussion. Based on your statement now, Councilman Doyle, it sounds like-
We didn't get a second.
Perhaps you're wanting to consider amending your original motion to countenance staff also contacting some of the local participants in septic dumping to see what their understanding and appetite level would be. So, but we do have the current motion on the floor. And I don't even know yet what the mayor wants to discuss. But I think we need to address the motion that's on the floor right now.
Well, on that, I'm sorry, Mayor. I don't think we're giving the option to the septic haulers to dictate to the city. Eventually, they'll get a letter, a letter[1760.64] Eventually, they'll get a letter, a letter letting them know of what the city decided. But the general direction is pretty much to go in that area where pretty much Mr. Kramer said how the approach was going to be made. And that's all we're trying to do is give direction. Am I right?
Yes, that's correct. But before we invoke on your motion, I just think that we should.
I know, but if there was a motion, I didn't hear a second, because you mentioned it, I don't know if you were seconding that or not.
Well, I was seconding it, but yeah.
Just to be clear. And now we're in discussion.
Yeah, so we have to continue discussion and I have the mayor.
First of all, you know, this issue was not the septic, it all started being the porta potties. You know, the porta potties was the issue and not the septic. The septic's were okay, the porta potties was supposedly where they were having the issue. IBWC had said, you know, on loads that had porta potties, that we would have to take samples of every single one and, but not every single one was going to go to the laboratory. The laboratory was only going to be sent, the samples where they, where they found any contamination or alerts at the plant, they would notify the city. But it's not all, it wasn't all septic, it was just porta potties. I want to make that clear because we're shutting off a big door because we do have septic in the city and, you know, and porta potties was the issue that rose about on this, on the issue of contamination, not septic.
Legal, is that right, that this was only implemented for septic, I mean, for porta potties and not septic?
Mr. Kramer? As Mr. Estes pointed out, it's city ordinance, we should never have been allowing, excuse me, porta potties in the first place. And he said, stated that we're going to need to revisit that ordinance, but as of right now, that ordinance of the city is porta potties should not be allowed, are not allowed to be dumping. It's clear cut. Now, this other thing about what the mayor's referring to, again, Mr. Estes and I went through this, this is not just Joel Kramer, it's also Mr. Estes, who, what you got sent, the two pages, Mr. Estes had his hand on that. He was at the meeting with ADEQ. I don't think your attorney would provide you false information or inaccurate information. I'd be surprised that he would because this two paperworks are what he also submitted to you. So, and he stated at the last meeting, clarifies again, porta potties are not allowed to be dumping. As of right now, porta potties are not to be allowed dumping under our current city ordinance, which in, if you look into your, grab from 19, that's what's going on. So again, I'm going to reiterate for the third time that Mr. Estes, your attorney, was also a co-author of this. If you want to go against your legal, that's up to you as counsel.
Yes, I want a solution, that's what I want. I want a solution and it's not just shutting it down. That's what I want, you know? I think we could find a solution, we could find, you know, you know, talk to IBWC, they never talked about finding, every finding, they would give us time to fix. You know, we got to find out if it's coming from Mexico or if it's coming from the porta potties, which is what the only thing that was, that was a question. And I, ADQ had already said that, you know, their 32-page or 30-some-page contract that we had, it says on page 32 about the porta potties, but nobody, every year that we have been working with had ever questioned it till this year. So they would look at it and they asked to change the ingredients of the porta potties to be able to, to be able to receive them. And that has not been addressed with neither the porta potty users nor the septic haulers. You know, I pushed to, maybe let's put everybody on the table, talk about it and find a solution. That's what I'm trying to do.
I can, Mr. Doyle?
I, you know, that's exactly, that there's been changes and those changes favor the city. One of the things that, that whatever neutralizers they put in the porta potties, some are probably a little harsh for IBWC to receive, but besides that, we still have an ordinance in place that we have to follow. And that's, and that's the bottom line. Now, if the council wants to change that ordinance, that's a whole different issue, but right now, we cannot, we cannot receive those porta potties because we'd be breaking the law.
I understand on porta potties, Mr. Doyle, but, you know, not septic. And that's what I'm trying to say. Septic is a whole different story.
Any more discussion? Okay. So we have a motion and a second?
Yes, I guess the motion is what's in place now.
Okay, so all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Okay, we have six ayes and one oppose. Item number eight, discussion and possible action on the appointment of Ana Parada to the Board of Directors of the Greater Nogales Santa Cruz County Port Authority to represent the city of Nogales on a one-year rotating basis. Discussion or?
I'd like to say something.
Sure.
The reason I put this on the agenda is because I'm new to the council and I want to learn and I've been on different committees and I love that and I just want to learn what there is out there and it's on a rotating basis. I'm not going to be there for the next three years and I'm happy with that.
Councilman Doyle?
Yes, Councilman Parada, how many meetings have you attended since you've been here to the Port Authority?
Since the dais, I have not been to, I've been to one.
One meeting?
Yes.
Well, okay. You know, this clause that was placed on the contract back when I was mayor, came on board on that. And it was something that our attorney wanted just to stick the Port Authority and he put that in there just to irritate him because he had some beef with them. And the thing is that even though back then, the Port Authority was doing a fantastic job, again, if it wouldn't have been, and not to get credit, but I was mayor at the time, but it would have been because they, they put me out front, that's what they do, they use a mayor because a mayor is the central point of the community. He's the one that brings most of the community behind him. And so when we were dealing with that overpass, if it would have been a councilperson that they would have had, they wouldn't have passed. We want to gun the money. They needed the mayor to be there. And that's why I believe that the mayor is one of those, it's like, and it's part of his duties, that he has a certain image and protocol that he goes about, his duties. And that's why the Port Authority has him as an honorary member because they know that when they go to Washington or any other office that they want, people want to see the mayor, not us as a council person. I've been there, we can attend, we can attend those meetings as long as there's not a quorum, but two other members can go. And I think that that would be the first place to start for anybody that's interested. And then, and then we need to discuss it down the road and also take into consideration the Port Authority because we don't own them. You know, they're not part, no, we don't, the city does not tell them what to do, really. But, but the thing is, they put a lot of effort in their projects. They work hard, it's out of their pocket that they go out and they're lobbyists for the community. But they need somebody that also they know, they know, and one of the things that I learned well, that in order to feel, when they're doing like that project that we were doing, the overpass over there in Mariposa, it was a very sensitive deal. The governor, the senators, they all wanted to know that the community was 100% behind that project because otherwise they would have sent that money to I-17 or somewhere else in the state where we got, I forget how many millions from the state and then we got some more from the feds. And I was even privy to talk to Senator Graham that was in charge of the DOT and through Senator McCain, they were very instrumental in getting us those $25 million. Now, if I would have been a councilman, they wouldn't even let me in the front door. That's the way, that's the way it is. When you're the mayor, it's the title that holds the recognition and I believe the Port Authority needs all that force behind them to be successful in projects that are going to be placed before them. That's been my experience.
Go ahead, Mr. Bonillas.
I agree that the face of the city is the mayor. In conversations with Mr. Rubin, the Port Authority will accept who the mayor and council elects to be in that position. If we place, we'd be breaking, I like, I personally like Councilwoman Parada's idea because one, we would be breaking, I guess, tradition in having the first woman on that council, on that committee. The mayor would be still the face of, for the city of Nogales. I understand Councilman Doyle's concern, but just to, so he's not that word, the mayor will still be the face for any documents, meetings. I do agree that the mayor would, that the senators or congressmen don't want to talk to a council member, they want to talk to the mayor and that still will be in place. There are some things that the mayor can do that we cannot. One of them is he is the, he is the face of the city of Nogales. But I believe that we can, we can break tradition tonight and please Ana Parada on that committee with the Port Authority.
Do you want to say something?
Again, I have a question. Is that you, Mayor, talking?
Mr. Mayor, go ahead.
And I got nothing, you know, against Councilwoman Parada, you know, I talked to the Port Authority, you know, we're just a representative of the city. We do not have a vote on the board, you know? Any two council members could join us, could join us on the meetings, every meeting, you know, obviously not three because then we'd be breaking open meeting laws. You know, I don't see the necessity to appoint somebody when, you know, there's always council members allowed to go into our meetings, you know? It's always, it's always been, you know, when I was a council member, I used to go, you know, and attend those meetings. But, you know, I don't see why we need to be appointing somebody to go to those meetings, you know?
Okay, go ahead, Mr., go ahead, Councilman.
Mr. Josh, would you come to the podium just to clarify?
Before Mr. Josh comes to the podium, I just want to make a comment on this, okay? And, you know, I kind of have mixed emotions on this item. I have nothing against another council member being on the board, but like Councilman Doyle said, this has been tradition, you know, the mayor is the face of the community. And I know that for a fact that the Port Authority brings people, politicians from high levels, like the governor, a senator or congressman, and when they come to the community, they want to talk to the mayor. They don't want to talk to the councilman or to the city manager or the mayor's secretary. They want to talk to the mayor. And it's a very unique situation because that's one of the commissions that requires that. We have another commission, that's the Nogales Housing Authority, where the mayor also serves as a chairperson. And that's, that's the, that rule for the Housing Authority. And I'm pretty sure that there should be a couple of more where the mayor is, the title of the mayor carries more authority than the people below. So, and like I said, you know, I don't have any, any, any comments, negative comments to say about anybody else on the commission, on the council to be on the board, but at the end of the day, when those politicians come to town and they say, and the Port Authority says, you know, we have council members, so-and-so representing the city of Nogales, do you want to set up a meeting with them? And then they'll probably say, no, we need to speak to the mayor. So it's a, it's a very unique situation and like, like Mr. Doyle said, you know, we're all invited to every Port Authority meeting because we get an email from the Port Authority. I've been to a couple of them and it's very, it's very informative, but, and really, my biggest concern is the rotating issue. You know, like for one year, we're there for one year, you know, we need to follow up at least the whole term if you're going to be on the board. And those are my comments. And that's my opinion.
Well, before you speak, Josh, looking at the city representations and responsibilities, the city will designate a representative of the city to serve as a non-voting member, the Port Authority Board of Directors. So when I become mayor, I will make sure that there is the mayor and a councilperson to attend these meetings.
Councilwoman Melendez?
Well, according to that stating, it says here, city reserves the right to change, sorry, city reserves the right to change that designation from time to time. It says it here very clear. So we can change it, why not?
Well, Mrs. Sted, beat me to it, you know? I, we have this document right in front of us and that was given to us, I guess by legal and it just clearly says that. But let me see what you have to say, Josh.
But, so before, Mr. Buen, this document is not a bylaw policy?
No, no, I'm not referring to, it's not a bylaw. I know, it's in the contract because they don't, I looked at the, I would, if I could, just a second. I believe, just a minute, Mr. Doyle, I believe there's no bylaws that you guys have because I kind of looked in your website looking for bylaws, right? So this was given to us by, I guess, the clerk and it's in the contract, that's all I have. It's, yeah, an attachment of Port Authority contract, October 2024. So I'm just reading point 52, section A, and so, you know, that's why I asked Ms. Parada to call Mr. Rubin to see what his perspective was on all of this.
Council, Mayor, for the Port Authority, our bylaws, we do have bylaws, ma'am.
I heard you didn't.
We do, ma'am. We do have bylaws and.
But I looked for them.
Correct, yeah, we don't have them on our websites, we do have bylaws, we can definitely share them. Our bylaws do not dictate who we pick to be our board members. The individual organizations that are represented on our Port Authority, speaking as blunt as I can be with the way it is written, our bylaws are in that the individual organizations, for example, I represent Index Nogales, I am the board member to represent Index Nogales. Tomorrow, Index Nogales can decide to change that and pick someone else and I have to step down and that's the respect that we have. Like council members have mentioned, our contract states that the city council will make the decision of who the member is of the board. We respect whoever the council picks. I don't have any right to opinionate, I don't have any right to say yes, no, anything. It's the way the bylaws are in. Now, to stress the point that everyone has been making, there are meetings that the request is of the mayor. Not talking. Not talking about Jorge Madonado, not talking about Ana Parada. I'm talking about just strictly the positions. There is meetings, for example, when we go to Mexico, a regidor doesn't have the same position as the presidente municipal, just as optics. So there will be meetings that at times, like we do have, where not the entire board of the Port Authority is welcomed at those meetings. It is just the members that, the individual that is requesting. It could be elected officials, being congressmen, senators, governors. It could be members of other countries. If we're going to be going to Mexico, which will be heavily be meeting in Mexico for deconsignes specifically on that project, that will require a certain position to be at those meetings. Not saying that the council member will not be there at those meetings, but the mayor will have to be invited because of the position. But at the end of the day, as to who the Port Authority dictates is on the board, we don't dictate that. That goes back into the question that you asked me at the last meeting that we had, Councilwoman Barra, on why don't we have females onto our board? Because no board has put a female onto our board, period. We're actively looking for them, but I can't dictate it. I can't go to the Fresh Produce Association and say, you need to put this person on there. It's not my right, it's not my direction. So at the end of the day, it is up to the council to decide who they want that member to be. But I do need to stress the point that there will be meetings that the mayor has to be there because of the position, not because of any other reason.
So if hypothetically, I am voted in, I could invite the mayor to take that, those meetings, right?
You can invite the mayor. There will be meetings that are specifically, for example, we had Senator Kelly that came down that specifically asked for specific individuals to be there. Those are the individuals that will be invited. It won't be, it's not anything against the board members of the Port Authority. It's the individual that's coming down that's requesting it. I do want to add the comment that Mr. Doyle mentioned, that yes, the history is that it's been the mayor for the position. But the way the contract was written under Attorney Machado at the time, and also supported on this next contract that we ended up getting signed last year with the current attorney firm that we have, also is stated that way, that any member from the council can be on there, whether it be the mayor, vice mayor, or any council member.
Go ahead, Mr. Doyle.
Yes, you know, I don't think we're seeing the value of the importance of the mayor being the mayor on the front row. Again, if somebody else besides a mayor would have been, we wouldn't have that beautiful structure right now that connects Mexico to I-19. Just wouldn't have it, wouldn't have happened. Because you weren't here at the time with, but you could probably talk to some of the members that were there.
He was part of it.
He was part of it.
Okay. Well, do you remember that?
It was Gavin Valencia.
Yes, and Jimmy, and, you know. And they put in a lot of their personal time. And not only in that project, there was other projects that. But what it comes down to, again, was the mayor is the one that the people outside our community, especially, like you said, in Mexico, in the governor's office, in Congress, that's the person that they want to hear what's going on in their community. And it's a team effort because the mayor looks, makes you guys look good. Now, I asked Councilman Parada, how many meetings have you been to? She said, well, I want to learn more. Yet she's only gone to one meeting, and she's been here close to eight months. So I don't see the interest, like she said, about learning about the board because you've only gone to one meeting. And why don't you go consistently, as a councilman, to the meetings and start learning about it? And then down the road, we can put it back on the agenda when you realize how interested you are. You know, that's just a recommendation. Because right now, you know, we need, for the time being, the mayor to be there to make sure that your job or the Port Authority's job is heightened in a more positive way. And that's the way I saw it. That's the way I see it right now from past experience. And that's why I'm voicing this opinion. Because it's about the community being together. If the community's not together, nobody's going to help us out at the state level or the federal level. We, they have to see that we're all on the same page and that we're supporting you because you're kind of our lobbyists in those places. So we need to work together. And it's the mayor's image that they want to see leading, I guess, the fight or, you know, whatever, whatever you want, however you want to place it.
If I can just add, just two seconds into it. Sir, whether I agree or disagree, I cannot give my opinion on it. The way the documents are written is the way the documents are written. And I have to honor what is on there.
And I'll say something about, since he brought up. Again, it was, it was the shortcoming of a man that wrote that that wasn't, didn't have the best interest on Nogales at heart. He had something against the Port Authority, and that's why he put that clause in there, just to make it adversary. So, you know, that's my experience.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry.
We need to get away from that.
I'm going to call for the question.
I'll just say one certain point, Mr. Doyle, just to correct it. Council, you do not have a lobbyist, you can't have lobbyists. So I just want to make for record that council does not have, you can't have lobbyists. They're like lobbyists. I didn't say they're lobbyists, because we don't pay them. But they, again, you provide those services from your own expenses. The city doesn't really give it.
I'm going to call for the questions so we can go ahead and vote.
Okay.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Who in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so the motion on the table is to appoint Councilwoman Ana Parada to the Board of Directors of the Greater Nogales Santa Cruz County Port Authority. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Nay? Oppose? Nay? Okay, so we have four ayes and three nays. Motion carries. Item seven, liquor license. Yes. Consideration and possible action of liquor license 2025-11. Consideration and possible action of liquor license approval of recommendation of the issuance of a temporary extension of premises/patio permit liquor license application by Mr. Nicolás Constantine Panasopolos for Pomos Napoletano Avin for four fundraisers on September 13, 2025, through October 4, 2025, October 31, 2025, and December 5, 2025. No discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, motion carries. Item number two, consideration and possible action of liquor license 2025-12. Consideration and possible action of liquor license approval of recommendation of the issuance of a special event liquor license application by Mr. Jose Antonio Vázquez for the Cultural Arts Committee of Nogales for the Fiesta Patrias on September 13, 2025.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item number three, consideration and possible action of liquor license 2025-13. Consideration and possible action of liquor license approval of recommendations of the issuance of a special event liquor license application by Rangel Socorro for the San Felipe de Jesús Parish for the Gran Baila Mexicano on September 6. No discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Stay. Motion carries. Item eight. I'm going to refer this one to City Manager Kramer.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, Mr. Boharkus. Item number one, consideration and possible action. I put that in there just for the emergency clause. I did give you the invoices. It was much below the cost. And I believe I gave you updates, a couple emails. I think you saw those as well. So the cost was under, it was $49,761 to repair that sewer pipe. So as far as it goes right now, this order does not have to be approved or looked upon because it's already been approved with $49,000. Which, again, I'll go further on that is that K-E-N-G company, Mr. Doyle, is the same company that paved your, one of your roads, Industrial Park Road. And if you look at it, they did a good job. So just like this, they did a good job as well. And they give us updates on a daily basis, or at least two days. And they were given the reports, which I think I sent to all of you. I'm just reiterating that because it's important because this is a very good company that did their work and did a good job of it. So it does not need to be approved because it's already been approved. We already had a purchase order. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Mr. Kramer, I just have one question. I know on the invoice, it specifies where this job was done or will be done. But on the contract, I didn't see any, any, any.
Yeah, I didn't include the contract, but it was on the Mariposa Wash. Right where it connected to Nogales Wash.
But what I mean is, I didn't see it on the actual contract?
I have the actual contract, I just didn't include it on this. Because again, it went through the, below the threshold, but I have copies. There's 15 pages of it. Certainly, if you want a copy, we have it in financial office.
Any more questions? Okay, so we don't have to vote on this, right?
Correct.
Okay, item two, consideration and possible action of Order 2025-08-022, An Order of the Mayor and Council of the City of Nogales, Arizona, Approving the Policies and Code of Conduct for Elected Officials and Advisory Board Members, Establishing Standards for Ethical Conduct, Meeting Procedures, Use of Public Funds, Conflict of Interest, and Enforcement.
Vice Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to table this. We never had a study session on it. And there's a lot involved in this manual that we need to look at. And I don't, we've been without it for quite, for the longest time. I don't think it's going to affect anything to have a study session and all be on the same page.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table?
I have a comment.
Do we have a second?
Second, second.
Second? Go ahead and discuss.
No, the discussion is, we've had this for six weeks. Why do we have to go through?
We didn't have a study session.
We had, we had this in our tablet that we could all read for six weeks. We all had that opportunity and the time. Now, Mr. Doyle, how many times do you look into your tablet and read the agendas?
I've seen it, and there's some stuff in there that I need to bring out and have legal and the different entities. We need a discussion, we need a study session. That's the reason I'm asking, that's why I asked for the table.
I believe legal was involved in this part of the code.
Sure.
Wow.
Go ahead, Mayor.
Compliment Doyle, there's questions on it that we need to, we need to go over, you know, get things straight. I don't think it, you know, it pertains to so many things that there's nothing, there's nothing clear. It's like Mr. Doyle, you know, I think we need to discuss it and do a study session and don't get into it. We're, you know, we're making the right decision.
Councilwoman Montiel?
Okay, so I did go over all these documents. And Mr. Estes, our attorney, gave these documents to us. It's going to be seven weeks now. And he repeatedly reminded us to look at the documents, to study them. He also is always available to ask questions. I called him a couple of times on some of the provisions there. And we had discussions about it. He reminded us in the last meeting that if we had any questions to ask him. And he's always very open to any discussion. We can discuss some of your concerns, Mr. Doyle, now. But there's some type of urgency about adopting a code of ethics, and we all know that. We haven't had one for years, and that's why I put it on the agenda. And I've asked the attorney to come up with a code of ethics for us public officials and also people serving in committees, city committees. And I really did my due diligence, I looked at it. And so like I said, you know, we need to move forward. There is enough time, ample time, to have read it. But we also can have a discussion, right, Mr. Rodney, right now, about questions we have regarding the code of ethics. If we didn't ask Mr. Estes before, then perhaps we could have the discussions now. Because, you know, I don't show why we have, there is an urgency. We need to adopt a code of ethics for public officials.
As it's noticed on today's agenda, it is open for discussion.
So I want to pull my second and for, we be able to discuss anything. We keep discussing, so I pull my second.
Second what?
Second the motion to table.
Oh.
So we're still in discussion, so.
You want to table it, Tom, the code of ethics, what you're saying?
Oh, he, he.
If I may.
I thought I seconded it, but Mayor's saying that he seconded, so which one, which one is it?
If I, if I can.
Councilman Monilla retracted, so somebody else can second.
But second what?
Can second the motion that's on the table. The motion on the table is to table, so.
Yeah, Mr. Doyle has made the motion, the mayor seconded it just right now. Yeah, and again, Vice Mayor, we've been without that. It's already written up, we just need to fine tune it. And that's why the study session that I'm calling for. Again, it's, I don't know what the rush is. Everything, every time you guys want to rush through something, you know, in my past experience, it doesn't come out as positive as when it's kind of brought into a study session where then legal opinions can be questioned individually in different areas. And the thing is that, you know, a study session brings out the best in all of us.
Thank you, Mr. Doyle. Mr. States, sorry to interrupt. I read this, this policy. And has there been any, you know, unless I missed it on the previous copies that we had, have we added any new items on that policy?
Not that I'm aware, but to be completely honest, I have not been a part of the drafting, discussion, or revision process on this particular document. So not that I'm aware, but if it had happened, I wouldn't be aware.
Did everybody on the board, on the council, read the entire thing?
Yes.
So, okay, so my question is, you know, I think we should go ahead and move on because who knows, who know, one of us might break the rules tomorrow, and then we don't have any policy in place. So I, you know.
I want to go on record as saying that I also spoke to Mr. Estes several times on questions that I had, which he made clear that if any of the council members, anyone had any questions, he was open. And I did take the time to speak to him several times if I had questions about it and for clarification.
Go ahead, Ms. Montiel.
And I just want it for the public because they talk to me a lot about adopting a code of ethics for public officials. And what I like most about what Mr. Estes did, and, you know, I asked him where he got a lot of this. And, you know, lawyers go to other municipalities, and, you know, you don't invent the wheel. And then they jive with the statute. You correct me, I'm not the attorney. You know, they make sure that what they implement here, they're right. It has to go along with what's a statute, and they, you know, they coordinate that. But what I like most is there's consequences to the behaviors. Shall they be, you know, unethical or whatever have you? And there are.
know, unethical or whatever have you, and there is, there's steps to the, if somebody complains about somebody being unethical, or they think we're unethical in some way or the other, our behavior, or anything of a public misuse of public funds, or any of that sort, there's like, what I like most about it is that there's like this, this procedure, if you will, that you follow. So someone in the public could file a complaint to the city manager, and then, I mean, and then it goes to the city attorney, and then the city attorney can send it to the Attorney General and so forth. So, and there's also fines of five hundred dollars, depending on what we, you know, violate, and so there's, it's very clear, it's, it's detailed, and that's what I like most about it, and I think he, he did a really good job.
And, okay, and my last comment is, you know, if we go ahead and adopt it today, you know, if there's something that, of concern for one of us in the, on the, on the council, we can always bring it back and amend it, right?
That's correct.
The only thing I'll say on this, because Mr. Estes isn't here, and Rodney's getting caught up, and then I was in some of the conversations with us, can't bring it up, some of it, because we discussed it in a different situation. But nevertheless, I know that he did state that he reached out to each council member, I believe. One and two is, I remember him saying, as you just asked, it's a living, breathing document. I remember him making that statement.
Okay, with that said, all those in favor signify by saying aye. We still going?
You've got, you've got a motion and a second to table, to table this.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Abstain?
Nay.
Motion fails. Okay, so we go to item number three. It was, do we need to go ahead and make another motion on that item?
You, you still have it as a live.
Oh, okay.
Order.
All right. Consideration and possible action of Order 2025-08-022, an order of the mayor and the city council, approving the policies and code of conduct for elected officials and advisory board members, establishing standards for ethical conduct, meeting procedures, use of public funds, conflict of interest, and enforcement. Do I have a motion and a second?
Okay, so I make a motion to adopt the policies and code of conduct for elected officials, board members, establish standards for ethical conduct, meeting procedures, use of public funds, conflict of interest, and enforcement.
My second. So motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries.
Yeah, five-two?
Okay, item three, consideration and possible action of Order 2025-08-023, an order of the council of the city of Nogales, Arizona, authorizing the purchase of two twenty-twenty-six Fort Maverick Trucks XL four-wheel drive hybrid from state contract for a total amount of sixty-six thousand, one dollar and fifty-four cents. There's a motion and a second, discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Abstain? Motion carries. Item number four, consideration, possible action of Order 2025-08-024, an order of the council of the city of Nogales, amending fee and rate schedules for water.
Second.
Okay, discussion.
I have a question. Just for clarification purposes, Mr. Kramer, this is for Mariposa Manor, specifically for Mariposa Manor. Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, because the action item is kind of misleading, you know, it's kind of, we all had this, we all had that question.
Right, it's not for other trailer parks or mobile homes. The one that we discussed with, with Mr. Estes. Just, just for my. Just for that, to get that settlement taken care of. Okay.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Abstain? Motion carries. Unanimous. Item number five, consideration and possible action of Order 2025-08-025, an order of the city of Nogales, Arizona, authorizing the renovation of the Paloduro Swimming Pool in an amount not to exceed a hundred and seventy-three thousand, eight hundred and forty-seven dollars and ninety-seven cents.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, discussion.
I, I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead, Councilwoman Woman, uh, Councilwoman.
Yeah, thank you. So the swimming pool is for, obviously, Paloduro, and I'm sure you already talked with the Parks and Rec Director, Mr. Kramer, about how we're going to, you know, how, how the city is going to manage that pool, and how we obviously going to use it along with the pool here, Public Works. Also, you know, this is new. I mean, we're spending a lot of money in this pool, and, you know, are the, is this open to the public? Of course it is, I know that, but, you know, since it's kind of like in a neighborhood, inclusive to Metal Hills, just, are we going to let those, the community, when are we going to let the community know they can use the pool? I've been asked those questions, which are really good questions. Also, you know, communicating this message out to the public, that there's going to be another public pool aside from the, the Parks and Rec one, and then the Carpenter one, if you could give us a little update later. I know it's not on the agenda, but, you know. So my question is, tell me a little bit how this is going to be implemented into our, the Parks and Rec program.
Yes, this pool is, it's going to be renovated. It will be open to the public. It'll be considered Parks and Rec's pool, much like we plan to. We are right in the stages of the last phase of that area of putting the brick in, in the Paloduro area, I can say, because I can say, tell you this, we are closer to, the office buildings are ready to go, so we have already had interest in that because that is right by the pool. So how does that tie into all this area? We will be, and we are ready to, once we get the cobblestone done in front of the Paloduro restaurant area, we will do an RFP for that. So I will be with Mr. Estes. I've already worked with it. He sent me templates. We will be going out for that as well. So with this, that said, that whole area is going to be open to the public. The pool, right now, we didn't discuss this, but it's certainly going to be discussed because it's going to be, obviously, right now, it's not heated, but we will look into that because we want to obviously use it for more than just the four or five months. If we can heat it like our other pool, we will certainly approach that, so it can be open a lot more. Granted, heated pool of that size, November, December's not, and January are not always ample times to swim, but certainly that's what we're looking at, but it will be part of Parks and Recs, and it will be a public pool. And we've already chatted with whatever we do with the RFP with the restaurant. Obviously, we're going to be able to have parties there for kids with the restaurant and tied with, and tied with Parks and Recs. We're obviously going to have to look for lifeguards more than just the two months, so we are looking at that as well.
Mr. Kramer, have you had any opposition from the residents of that neighborhood of Metal Hills?
Not at all.
Regarding the traffic and the?
Not at all. I've heard, I've heard a lot of positiveness about that. The fact is, thank you for doing this. Thank you for bringing that into the area. There'll be more for that area and just around the area, too. It does, not just Metal Hills, but it, it scatters into further south a bit and certainly east as well. So it, it, it will encompass a lot more, so we, we hope to do more with that. And again, we'll probably come back to you later to look at what the heating elements are because we do want to heat that pool. That hasn't been discussed with Parks and Rec's director, but I certainly am bringing that up right now.
All right, so having said that, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Unanimous. Item number six, consideration and possible action of Order 2025-08-026, an order of the council of the city of Nogales, Arizona, appointing Ms. Mary Darling to the Nogales, Santa Cruz County Public Library as a member-at-large. I have a motion and a second.
I have.
Discussion?
I have a question for Mr. VanderVall, if you would like to please step forward.
Go ahead, Ms. Monias.
Earlier, Mr. VanderVall, you stated that you're nonpartisan as a, as a board trustee chairman. However, later comments was that you're promoting DEI. So which one is it? Are you nonpartisan, or are you promoting an agenda from the Democratic Party, which is DEI, which was stated after you had made that comment that you're nonpartisan? And then we had other people in the community saying that you, that this board is, is promoting DEI.
Let me clarify, when you say you, are you referring to me myself personally or as a board? As a, as a chairman, as you said that you're not, that you are nonpartisan, am I correct?
I am nonpartisan.
Okay.
Councilman Monias, I, I don't think that question is on the agenda, you know, we're,
well, I need clarification in order to make a vote, so it's not on the agenda, but I, I have the right to ask which one is it, because I'm confused on, as far as me being able to make a vote on this. So this is a simple question. It is, of course, it's not on the agenda, but it is a question towards how I am going to vote, because I am confused because it was said earlier, nonpartisan, but then they go back and say, well, we're promoting DEI. So that's, that's all I need for clarification. That's, that's all.
Thank you, sir.
Any more discussion? I just want to make a comment. You know, I've known Mary for about maybe a little bit over six years, and I know she's a very active person in the community. She does a lot for the community, and, you know, I've never heard any, any negative things about her. As a matter of fact, tonight at, at a call to the public, there was a lot of positive wishes and wording for her, but I think she will make a, a, a good board member, a great board member. Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Yeah, it's hard enough to, to, I visited the library, and Danitza's here, and she, she can agree to that, she's seen me there. So, you know, it's hard enough to find people to, to want to serve in committees. It's hard enough, let me tell you. And what Mr. VanderVall does, and, and along with, with the library crew, and under the, you know, direction of Maritza and, Danitza, and, you know, you know, I'm thinking about it right now, you know, we, we, we serve on the dais, and we're here late, and, but that's a commitment we made, and the commitment that you make to serve in this, these committees, I, I thank you, because I asked, you know, who has raised their hand that wants to serve in these committees?
No one.
Nadine, very, very few. I said, is, is there, I, I was naive to this. I mean, do a lot of people walk into the library and say, I want to, I want to serve in those committees? Nope. No. We see the meetings sometimes filled, depending on what issue we're talking about, and I thank those people that come in to these meetings and, and, and listen and, and participate and, and want to get involved in what happening, what's happening with their city. But, you know, thank you. Thank you for, for wanting to serve in this committee, Mary. I know you're very busy, and, and having to say, you know what, I'm going to take some time to be in this committee. Thank you. And, and they spoke volumes there. And, and like Hector said, we, we've known you. I've known you not too long, as long as Hector's known you, but thank you. Thank you, Mr. VanderVall. Thank all the committee that is going to be serving for the children of the city and Santa Cruz County.
Go ahead, Ms. Kramer.
I just, you know, I, I noticed that, you know, the public library, you know, most people think that it's a position that, that nobody will contest, one of the, one of the person that's applying to be a board member, but yet we find controversy in, in this candidate, and, and it just kind of dampens the spirit of it, that, that, you know, some people feel uncomfortable with a certain person, where we've had in the past, other candidates that come, come in and, and they, and there's no question, they, they just, nobody, nobody questions their, they're, it's just, everybody votes for them, you know, to, to be part of that, of that board. And, and this seems to be issue, and I guess it's got to do something with that, with different, I'll just say with different aspects of it, that, that get drawn into the picture because of the candidate, so. So I'm not talking about that she's not qualified. Yeah, I've, I've known Mary. She's kind of actively engaged, and, and she does get involved, but at the same time, it brings a little controversy to a, to a board that shouldn't have that. And, and that's just my concern, you know, that there's going to be a segment of the community that's not going to appreciate probably that there was controversy on somebody that in the past we've picked, and there's no controversy, you know, and that's, that's, I just wanted to mention that. Thank you.
I just have a question.
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Mr. Doyle, have you ever wanted to be a member of the library? Have you ever volunteered for that position?
No, no, I, I, I'm not, you know, I'm here to make sure that there's peace in the community, that there is, you know, people feel comfortable with the candidates or the people that we choose, and that's why I'm here.
Councilwoman Monia?
Just for the record, there was people in the community who reached out to the board of trustees, and they were recommending other people, and they were, they never followed up or bothered to talk to these people, our constituents that had a concern. So just for the record, there were other people that raised their hands, but were ignored. Thank you.
Any more discussion? With this said, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries. It's four, four ayes and three opposed. The mayor, yeah, the mayor and.
The mayor voted against?
Yeah. Mayor, oh, you voted aye?
I, I voted nay.
Okay, so there's, I'm sorry, that was. Yeah, let's do a, a roll call vote. Start with me. Aye?
Aye.
Nay?
Five-two. Number nine, item number nine, ordinance, consideration and possible action of ordinance zero twenty-twenty-five dash zero-eight dash zero-zero-five. An, an ordinance of the city of Nogales, Arizona, amending the Nogales City Charter, Chapter nineteen, utilities, Article two, water service, Division four, water rates and charges, Section nineteen dash eighty-one, water service charges, by amending the categories of users, providing for repeal of conflicting ordinances, providing severability, and providing an effective date. There's a motion and a second, discussion.
Can I have a complete description on this ordinance, and why it is pertaining only to manor?
The question is, is it only pertaining to manor, manor, trailer park, or?
My understanding, without having been involved in the background of it, but as it appears on the agenda and my review of these documents, is that it arises from the Mariposa Manor matter, but as written, this would effectively amend this specific section of the code to replace the term "trailer parks" with "mobile home residential communities", and then, as I understand, there's kind of a safeguard to also repealing them in any conflicting, so I would take that to mean anywhere else where trailer parks are. So I would take that to mean anywhere else where "trailer parks" are referenced, you would substitute "mobile home residential communities." And so to try and answer your question, as I understand it, that would be going forward, Section 19-81(c)(4) would, from now on, read "mobile home residential communities." And any related references to "trailer parks," insofar as this particular code section is concerned, would also be amended to say "mobile home residential communities" rather than "trailer parks."
Are you okay with that, Mr. Mayor?
Now, if we adjust, adjust on top of the order to the matters, do we have to do the adjustments involving other trailer parks within our community?
Go ahead, Ms. Monias.
Not sure what adjustment we're referring to.
Does it set precedence, in other words?
Does it set precedence for other trailer parks?
Right. I think the question is, is this ordinance covers all mobile home parks or from trailer park to mobile home? Or it just covers...
Again, without knowing the background of that Mariposa Manor case, my reading of this is that upon approval going forward, the term "trailer parks" is Section 19-81. And any other references in the code that might refer to "trailer parks" as this water service charge is concerned, would replace the term "trailer park" with "mobile home residential communities." So would that mean that any particular community or piece of property that we used to refer to as a trailer park would now be referred to as a mobile home residential community? That's how I, that's what I understand this to do.
So I think the mayor's concern is, since it's going to change the code from "trailer park" to "mobile homes," is it just going to be the title or is it, does it also include the changes in the water rates that have been approved for Mariposa Manor? Is that your, is that correct, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Because if that ordinance covers other trailer, not trailer parks, mobile home parks with the same water rate that we have established at Mariposa Manor.
I would have to review the background of the Mariposa Manor case. I would also have to review the other portions of the code that use the term "trailer parks" in order to answer that question.
Yes, so...
I think you need, we need Mr. Estes because he authorizes, he was the author of this. The way it reads on his, he does on the end talk about Mariposa Manor again. But your question is relevant because is this going to impact the rest of the mobile home trailer parks? Again, I discussed it with him generally. He stated it was just for that, but he's not here to answer that big question of the day. Does this impact all the other mobile home parks? We do have a meeting next week. We certainly could table this, council, because we do have a meeting next Wednesday, as you know. So we can certainly bring that back on Wednesday to get, and he will be present, hopefully. So we can bring that question for him to get answered. Because we do have a meeting next Wednesday at 10:00 a.m. and we can put that on there.
So... Who made the motion?
Make a motion, Vice Mayor.
First, we have to retract the other motion before we make a new motion.
As I heard, there was a motion to approve.
Yes.
I mean, I'm not, I'm not the clerk, but I believe there was a motion to approve. I don't know if I heard a second or not.
I don't know. Yeah, there was a second.
There was a second. So that would need to be voted on before a new motion could be, unless there's further discussion. But another motion cannot be made until the standing motion is resolved.
All right. Yes, go ahead. Yeah, that would be the first motion when I read off the ordinance. So I think, Councilwoman Melendez.
Yep, and then you made a motion. Who made it?
Let me remember.
Did you say so?
Well, I retract.
Oh, you retract? We both retract.
Okay. All right, so all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. So now we have a new motion. More discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries to table this item. And Judy, just an observation here, on the ordinance number, it starts with a 02, is that correct or... Oh, it's 02? Okay, so that's it. Okay. All right. Okay, yeah, that's an ordinance, okay. Okay, item number 10, mayor and councils report on current events. Mr. Monias.
I attended the Fourth of July event for the city of Nogales. I had a great time. Also had an opportunity to participate with Leslie Motta, that made the presentation earlier. We distributed burritos to different organizations. I went to the Mission Crossroads and the kitchen staff at Mission Crossroads were happy because they didn't have to dirty up the kitchen and they didn't have to scrub any dishes. So they thanked us personally too for that. But I, it was an eye-opening moment for me in seeing the necessities on homelessness in this community. That's all I have to report, Vice Mayor.
Yes, I'll pass it to Councilman Lopez.
Oh, thank you. Okay. Just a reminder that we have the Fiesta de Patria event that's going to be on the September 13th at Caden Park. The following day, we're going to have a concert, Ensemble Clásico de Guitarras, on the Huidman Museum. And we are having a silent action. And this is going to be August 23rd from 7 to 10 at Huidman Museum. You're all orderly invited.
Thank you, Councilwoman Melendez. Councilwoman Montiel?
Nothing at this time.
I also attended the Fourth of July and it was a very good event. I want to thank Councilwoman Montiel, she did an excellent job and all the people involved for Parks and Rec, Police Department, Fire Department, the administration, everybody that played a role in putting this together. It was a great event and hopefully we can make it better next year. So that's all I have. Mr. Mayor?
Yes. It was here and it's really everybody, Parks and Rec, everybody, you know, all the council that attended, the parade, the best thing that was great, the highlights that were great, music was great, you know? Everything was very fully, thank you, everybody. I was taking all the glory. We had, we had a pretty good experiment to thank the community, the regional, I want to thank the community for being, for always like us and for accepting all the things that have happened in here, you know? I heard the government, the people who are enjoying all of it, to the game, to all the families who are delighted, it was great for the community. I'm looking into bringing, bringing the Mexican League, hopefully next week, we have the dates, bringing out the team, so hopefully the agenda is going to be the baseball, the two or three games that they want to do, so hopefully you know.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And item number, in the future agenda items, we have a meeting next...
Yeah, I'll bring that. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Yes, I believe I sent you an email and thanks to you, you gave me this some direction about the housing meeting. Certainly, we'll have that housing meeting at 10:30, but we will have a city council meeting at 10:00. You'll get the agenda sent out Monday morning. It's not much, other than whatever mayor just said, what he may want to add. We'll have just two items on that, so it should be short. And then from there, we'll do the housing meeting that we did not have. But thank you again, Vice Mayor Bahorkis, for giving me the information regarding those meetings. It was certainly important. But I did send you guys an email. I believe I said, oh, you got that email? We will work on the agendas Monday morning and we will get those out for both meetings, probably by 10:00 or 11:00. So you look at those agendas. It won't be much, but we want to make sure you know that you're getting those out.
Okay, so with that said, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Well, thank you, Hector.
Do I have a second? Do I have a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? Abstain? Did you abstain, Mr. Mayor? Okay. Meeting adjourned.